Oh, okay.
Could you please mute your phone?
All right, we are ready to get started. This is our study session for April 25th. Our presenter, I understand, is with us, thanks to technology.
Yes.
And Lauren Driscoll will introduce the topic and the speaker.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as I'm sure you've all had your own experiences, electronic scooters have become a new, modern form of transportation, used in a variety of different ways, both for pleasure and travel and tourism, but also for what we call last mile in the transportation world. That's often where an Uber has dropped you off, or a bus has dropped you off, and you need to get that last mile to your destination, helping to connect multiple transportation sources. Bird Scooter is presenting to you today. They are a major provider of electronic scooters throughout different communities. They have been in Kansas for a significant amount of time, and over the last couple of years have really started to move forward with pilot programs in smaller communities. When we first saw electric scooters come out, we saw them in big cities. They're now becoming more prevalent throughout the state. Mike Butler with Bird is on here today. He's going to go through a presentation that was in your packet, and he's really the subject matter expert in this. I will say, staff has had some conversations with Bird, just kind of learning about how municipalities interact with this. Typically, an ordinance is adopted to address, you know, the usership of the scooters, and that's really about how, you know, me, the rider, behaves on the scooter, right? So that there are ways to handle that. And then, the operation side of things, you know, what Bird does, where they pick the scooters up from, how they pick them up, redistribute them, their rates, those things. Those are all under usually an MOU, memorandum of operation, or understanding, or agreement, pick your legal document, but something to that effect. Other cities that we've talked to that may have more than one provider, let's say Bird Scooter, Lime Scooters, and others, have one set of rules on the books for that user, and then have these different operating agreements or MOUs. So that's typically how you handle the provider, and then how you handle the user. So part of this is learning firsthand kind of about this world of electric scooters, and how it would work in Salina, from this provider's perspective. And then if this is something you would like to see come to our community, then we start working through that ordinance and MOU kind of perspective.
Lauren, I'm sure we'll cover it in greater detail, but it might be good just to give a little bit of an overview of the community conversations that you've had so far.
Thank you, Mike. We have had and reached out to a number of stakeholders, talked to the universities, talked to USD 305, talked to major employers, talked to major retailers, and have also talked internally with PD, Parks and Rec, we've talked with SDI, a variety of different people that would be affected by these and how they would be used in those spaces. Part of the process of moving forward with Bird as a provider in the community is creating a master map, and that map includes kind of two key elements. One is where redistribution points should be. Bird kind of reserves the right, if they have other spots that they're finding maybe aren't really good redistribution spots, that they'd like to try some others, but they give us a chance at the beginning to say, these are our must haves, or these are where we ideally like them. Particularly in the downtown area, we have redistribution points based on some of the stuff we're doing with the Arts Entertainment District and other types of transportation that are down there. And then, the other thing we've done is talk about kind of no-go zones. There's something called geo-fencing, that this live map that they have that runs with the app says, you know, if the geo-fence goes around something, it means the scooter stops, and it won't go in there. So one of the conversations we had with Parks was geo-fencing, you know, certain portions of our parks, they can't just kind of become this landing zone, or, you know, kind of this off-road thing, but still allowing some of the cut-throughs. You know, if there's a drive that goes through the park and comes out the other side, you can scooter through the drive to get to the other side of the park and to a different connecting road. Also talked with the universities, you can get the scooters to the universities, but you can't get around the universities. So it's like, once you're there, you're not all over campus. And so they had particular drop points that they found. It's also dynamic and live, too, in the fact if we have an event come up, like a parade, that we would notify Bird Scooter, and they would update the map to, let's say, make that parade route a no-go zone for 24 hours, or six hours, or whatever. And when Riverfest comes up, I have a feeling we don't want scooters zipping around Riverfest, so we could make that a no-go zone for three or four days, or however long we wanted that. So it is very dynamic. It also has the ability to create these slow zones. So one of the things that SDI had highlighted is, they felt that Santa Fe should be a no-go zone, but the cross streets like Ash and Iron could be slow zones, so you could still get across, but if you wanted to come onto Santa Fe, you'd really have to park it somewhere at a distribution spot, or leave it where it was at and walk Santa Fe, but you'd still be able to get through, what, 7th and 5th? I always mix those up. So you'd be able to get to the backside of Santa Fe, where the entrance to a lot of the businesses are, or you could access a plaza and then get to Santa Fe through walking. And then you can go, the cross streets would be one of these slow zones, knowing and anticipating a lot of pedestrian traffic there. You can also set these slow zones up, leading to a no-go zone. So a lot of those things have been discussed with the stakeholder group. They've met two or three times and have worked through this map to the point where they're happy with it. And if you do decide to go forward with this as a service or a provider in Salina, of course, that map would come in front of you guys as part of that process. Okay? Leave it to Mike.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good to go, okay. Well, thank you for that warm introduction. Yes, my name is Mike Butler. I've been working with the city of Salina on a potential transportation program, almost identical to what we've done with, I believe, about 15 or 17 cities in the state of Kansas, so hoping to add Salina to that growing list. So what I'll do, I'll present for about five or seven minutes. If any questions come up along the way, feel free to stop me, or I can just go the whole route and then open it up for Q and A afterwards. But let me start sharing my screen. Oh, there we are. Okay, you can go on to the next one. So I think before we kind of get into kind of what we do, I think it's really important to talk about why we do it, why this business is ran, and why we do what we do. And it really is to help improve our communities, and of course, improve the lives for the people within those communities. On the next slide, you'll see that we do that by being a transportation company. The industry has a fancy term where they call it micro-mobility. Really, at the end of the day, we're in transportation. Many cities even view us as a form of public transportation that's actually free for their city. And we do this by helping people get to A to B by way of these shared electric vehicles. Now, we started this company in 2017. We're actually the first company in the world to do this concept. And, you know, fast forward today, we went from being live in just, you know, one city in California to now live in dozens and dozens of countries, five continents, almost 400 cities, and 100 million rides. I mean, that number I like to throw out there because that means 100 million times a user, a member of a particular city, has trusted our service to get them to where they want to go, which is why we are largely seen as the most trusted provider of this in the entire world. And, yeah, I think like Lauren, I mentioned, you know, these really are cities, big and small. The general perception is that this type of service is really only used in large metropolitan areas. I think that's just a product of that's where people tend to visit, and so they tend to only see them in those areas, and so they think that that's only the places that we are. The reality of it is that the majority of our cities actually are close to Salina's population. So you can see here, this just has, you know, a fraction of the cities that were alive in Kansas, but that includes places like Fort Scott, with only 7,000 people there, and all the way up to Overland Park, Kansas City in Kansas, and also Kansas City in Missouri. So, again, I bring this up because our goal is to bring this type of transportation to all types of cities. And because we've done it time and time again, that's why we're confident that the service will be hugely beneficial in Salina. Now, how it works is really simple. It is all app-based on your phone. You would download our application, you would sign our agreement, verify you're of the right age, put your payment information in. And if it was the first time you were going to ride, you'd be required to complete a series of videos and tutorials and the acknowledgement of local Salina laws to ensure that you know how to ride properly, you know how to park properly, you know how to interact with the service. And so you're going to do that one time, and then we're also going to make sure that you are constantly reminded of these things as well. So we do that through email marketing, we do that through ongoing communication, the app, and then, you know, kind of at the end of the day, of course, you're riding this the same thing, or same fashion as you do a bicycle. So it's pretty simple, it's meant to be ridden on the street and then parked on the sidewalk. Pricing is standard as well, so this is $1 to unlock the vehicle. So when you use your phone in your pocket, that's going to charge you $1, and then it's going to charge you a per-minute fee as well, of roughly about 30 cents, which means that an average ride comes out between about $6 and $7. On top of that, we want to make sure this is democratized for everyone. It's not just for a segment of the population. So we have discounts available to folks if you're enrolled in government assistance programs, if you're a veteran, if you're a senior citizen, if you're a healthcare worker, you get a massive discount as well. And so, these are things that we do to make sure that, you know, all segments of the population are in trust here. As Lauren mentioned, we've had to develop some really sophisticated technology over the last couple of years to ensure that we have the confidence of every city. You could think of major, major cities that are very sophisticated, like Rome, Italy, or Berlin, Germany, or New York City, or Los Angeles. If you want to gain the confidence of those cities, you have to have the technology to, you know, serve that community. So what we've had to do is program our vehicles to where if it enters even a certain segment of the city, a certain neighborhood, a certain park, a mall, we can actually program the vehicles where they'll slow down to a certain speed, so typically from 15 miles an hour down to 10, or that vehicle will stop entirely. So the rider will be notified, the vehicle will slowly come to a halt, and we'll have to turn a 1A to get back there. So I bring this up because we've had to develop all of this for major, major cities, and so all we're doing is just replicating that here. I think general tidiness is a huge piece of our business as well, and I think that's an ongoing discussion because, you know, our future as a business relies on integrating something like this into all types of cities, all types of communities. So we go through some pretty proactive, as well as reactive tactics, to ensure that we have a level of tidiness. I think the most important one here is that middle piece that says local presence. I'll talk about that in the next slide as well. But this is really important because it means we're going to employ one to two local businesses or entrepreneurs to run the business operationally on behalf of us. So this is a business or an individual living in Salina, who lives a couple minutes away, who can react and address any, anything that comes up within the city. So if something needs to be taken care of, if a vehicle needs to be moved, if a vehicle was toppled over, that person is minutes away to make any sort of adjustments on the fly. So that's just one piece of this. We constantly do a number of things as well, to educate riders, to incentivize them to park correctly, to ride correctly. So I think there's a number of things that we do as a business to combat that. And I think the most important one is just the fact that the city is working with one business in Bird and a measured amount of vehicles. You know, this scenario is not what you see in places like Austin or Nashville and Los Angeles, because those cities have thousands and thousands of vehicles, and they have multiple companies doing that. That's not the case here. You know, the case with Salina is that you have one vendor and a small amount of vehicles to operate. As I mentioned, we partner with local businesses. We call these folks fleet managers. This is an individual that has to have certain tangibles to be considered a business partner of ours. So they have to have transportation, they have to have time, they have to have space, they have to have some grittiness and some hustle mentality to them, because they're the ones on the ground actually deploying these vehicles, servicing them, charging them, repairing them, doing all of the above, and then we share the revenue with them. So they're actually completely incentivized to make sure vehicles are on the road, tidy, looking right, because the more that they do that, and the more consistent they are doing that, the more times those vehicles are going to be ridden, and that means more dollars in their pocket. And when local businesses have dollars in their pocket, they tend to spend it more on local businesses. So it's a really nice flywheel effect for communities. And our proposal is really simple. You know, we view ourselves as a transportation company. That's first and foremost what we do. If a city wants to invest in public transportation, that is a really hefty investment, and it's not always reliable, this is free for all of you all. So I want to make that very clear, you are not paying for this. The user is the one paying for it on a per-ride basis. We're also going to give the city a dedicated point person. So this is an employee of Bird who manages all of the accounts, all of the cities that we have, and city partners that we have in the state of Kansas, to ensure the overall success of this. We're also going to give you a dashboard that shows where vehicles are currently, and where are they being used. I think it's really important to know where your citizens are riding these vehicles, and what businesses are they going to, because that can implement, or that can influence kind of future programs related to this. I think that launch obviously needs to be updated, just because there's no chance it happens in the next couple of days. But the number of vehicles is also something that is adjusted based on rider demand in the community. I think, as Lauren mentioned as well, the approval document that we use for this is just a memo of understanding that talks about the expectations of our business when coming into Salina. And then you put that in conjunction with the ordinance, and then we're ready to go. But that is it. I will pause, as I know that was thoroughly long-winded, and I'll just open it up for any questions.
Start with the Commissioners. Okay. Do these, have you talked about being able to, you know, slow them down or have them not go in areas? Do they shut off at night?
They do, yeah, we'll shut them off between midnight and 4:00 AM.
So they, so they still can run during an evening hour when it's dark?
Correct, yep.
There we go, okay.
They have headlights and taillights on them as well, and brake lights, everything as well.
I guess this may, and this may be a question for our city attorney, but how are we indemnified against any kind of lawsuit as a city? I guess maybe we haven't seen the documentation that we...
I could take that one unless the city attorney wants to take it. Yeah, so we're, and this is, the language that you're seeing or will see on this memo of understanding, this exact language has already been approved by every city that we've been operating in the state of Kansas. So you're not getting anything new, we're not presenting anything new. This language has already been reviewed by probably dozens of city attorneys in the state of Kansas. And what it's essentially saying is that we are indemnifying the city unless someone can prove a degree of gross negligence against the city, in which case we cannot help you out there. So that's a really difficult thing to do, and it's a very, it's a certain degree of being an edge case there, because it's essentially saying that, you know, someone would have to notify the city 5,000 times about a pothole, and you'd have to ignore them 5,000 times. And if that's the reason of an incident, you know, we're not going to be the ones to back you up on that. But in virtually all cases, other than that, we would.
Well, I'm just guessing if there was any kind of accident or issue, that somebody, they always look for the deep pockets, and I'm guessing the city of Salina has deeper pockets than Bird, so that would just, by choice, I'm guessing we'd get brought into a suit if something happens. You said there's an age limit, how is that age limit verified?
In two ways. So the simplest way, and this is what we do in most cities, just an acknowledgement on the waiver. So when they sign this, they're acknowledging that they're of legal age. Otherwise, you know, you can't legally sign this if you're not an adult. In some cities, I'd say 98% of them, we don't do this. But in some cities, we can actually turn on an additional layer that requires someone to put and submit their driver's license. And if they do that, we'll take a look at it, we'll verify it, and then we realize that they can actually be, you know, applied for an account. The reason we don't do that sometimes is there are plenty of people out there, as we know, that just don't have a driver's license and still want to use some type of affordable transportation, and so we don't want to dissuade them from being able to do that. So it's kind of an interesting balancing act, because, you know, you want to make sure everyone can ride it, and you want to make sure there aren't 14-year-olds riding it. So it's an interesting kind of dynamic.
I guess I have one more question, then I have comments after we're done asking questions. The, so you hire, basically you enter into a contract with the, we'll use the word entrepreneurs, that are in business with you. Do they sign some kind of agreement with you that they'll be available, you know, during the hours that the scooter's being used?
Yeah, so they obviously signed an agreement with us. They're a huge piece of this puzzle, they're a business partner of ours. Today, we have about 800 or 900 of them throughout the US, serving big cities or bigger cities like Wichita, Topeka, or even small cities like Sterling, Kansas, with 2,000 people there. So they signed an agreement with us, there's expectations that they have to meet. There are daily, weekly, and monthly KPIs that they have to meet. And we always reserve the right to replace that person if we feel like they're not holding up their end bargain. But we know what makes someone a really good fit, or what makes a business a really good fit. The conversity of that is also true. So, you know, we wouldn't have any problem finding, you know, local businesses that are interested in doing this. In fact, I think we already have.
Well, I guess I did have one other question. What keeps someone from riding it to an area and then just leaving that scooter laying wherever they, wherever they stopped?
That's what they're supposed to do.
Docking station?
There are no docking stations.
Okay.
Yeah, the idea is that you're taking this, you know, from A to B, wherever B is, you know, similar to, you know, if you were taking a taxi or an Uber, you wouldn't want to take that Uber three-quarters of where you wanted to go, you want to take it where you're going.
So Mike, then clarifying, these redistribution spots are when your distribution manager starts picking them up, wherever they've been left, putting them in a truck or whatever, and they're going to haul them back to these spots. So there are kind of known spots where you would find them, but you also may see them out and about where somebody has left them until they're redistributed.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of my concern from being over in Manhattan, Kansas. You see them laying all over, and I don't know how long they would be there. So, anyway.
Mike, do you have a timeline in which they need to be picked up and redistributed within, so I mean, is one of these going to land the side of the sidewalk for three days?
It could. The reason why it typically isn't, and we're not in Manhattan, so I can't speak specifically for that other business or that market, but in our market specifically, that person is incentivized to pick up those vehicles and move them to a location where there's a greater likelihood that it will be used. So if it's on in front of someone's house somewhere, the chances of that being discovered and picked up are pretty low. But if someone, if that fleet manager goes and picks it up, brings it back down to a place off Santa Fe, or, you know, more towards a downtown or commercial area, the chance that it's used is greater, and then the chance that that person makes money is greater. So, you know, we have at times SLAs that say a vehicle needs to be redistributed within, you know, X amount of hours or X amount of days with certain cities. But most of the time, cities just give us the leeway to do so, because they have the confidence in our business that, you know, they know that it actually behooves us to make those changes and in terms of where vehicles are on an hourly or daily basis.
Commissioner Lenkowitz. Commissioner Longbine?
Yes. Is this a publicly traded company?
Yes.
Is it profitable?
No.
What's its symbol?
BRDS.
Okay. And where is the company based out of?
In California.
California. Okay. Will the city receive any revenue from having these scooters?
Right now, no. And most of the time, for the first year of like a trial period, most cities just say, hey, let's just do the financial straight up. And then at the end of that, we'll have a really good understanding of what the financials look like, and then it can turn that on for the second year. I want to be very clear about this, this is a trial period. This is not a permanent program that we're putting here, right? We're asking the city to review this for about nine to 12 months and see if it's a good fit. So we're not asking you for $10 million, we're not asking you for a 10-year agreement. We're asking you to fall in line with what the rest of the state of Kansas has done. And so, this is something to where typically at the end of that, I think we just did that with Emporia, for example. First year was straight up, and then now they're putting on a fee for the city that we're going to give to them on a quarterly basis.
And how much is that going to be?
It's about 10 to 15 cents per ride.
But Mike, just to clarify, that's something the city commission, the two parties, both Bird Scooter and the city, kind of negotiate what that fee is?
Right.
Yeah, that's interesting. So the 12-month trial period is kind of the standard?
Yep.
Okay, and how many units do you anticipate you would start with here in Salina?
Anywhere between about 50 or 75 is probably what you'd see scattered throughout the city. And then if it makes sense to do so, if demand is really high, which I anticipate it will be, we'll add in increments of about 25. So if that number is scary, we have about 75 scooters on the road at all times in Fort Scott, and that's a city with, you know, a fraction of Salina, so, and that's just because demand there is really high. So it's really circumstantial, but, you know, it doesn't really make sense for us to add vehicles that rode throughout being used. So that's why we do a really good job of assessing kind of what that Goldilocks, what that sweet spot is.
So Mike, just to clarify too, so when they've done these trials in other communities, they've done a pilot agreement. So then the pilot agreement then becomes the MOU, correct? If that community chooses to go forward? Because I think one of the things that Bird set us was two agreements, one's the pilot, and that's kind of that initial stage. And then if that becomes a long-term thing, there's the MOU.
Not necessarily. Actually, the MOU is used almost as a pilot agreement. I know it is kind of confusing even the wording there, but if you were to look at most of the cities we have in Kansas, the program is viewed as a pilot program, but the mechanism that we receive approval, the document that we receive approval is an MOU, and in that MOU stipulates what the term is, which is usually 12 months. So that's what we're talking about, we're talking about. It's just viewed as a pilot.
So at the end of 12 months, what happens? Do you come back in front of the commission? Does it auto-renew? Does it cease to exist? What does that look like?
Yeah, so about 60 days before that, probably 90 days before that, we'll reconnect with whoever our main point of contact in the city of Salina is, understand what the reception has been with the city. This is, you know, we're also going to consistently be having conversations with the city, so it's not like we're having this one conversation, and then you never hear from us. Whoever wants to own this relationship with Bird will constantly be speaking with us. So you'll have a pretty good understanding of how the program is going. But you're right, at the end of that, we'll bring this back, and we'll talk to the city staff and commission and say, hey, we think this was a great fit, we'd like to continue to extend this program. Here's what we're going to do in order to do that. So maybe that means a more formal agreement that is for two, three, four years. Or, worst-case scenario is that you come back and say, hey, Mike, thanks for trying this, Salina, turns out it wasn't a good fit. Why don't you, you know, try it back in a couple of years?
Okay. I think Commissioner Hoppe touched on this, the liability. Do you carry liability insurance?
Yep, yeah, we have to with every city on the planet.
Okay, and is there some kind of user agreement that the users agree to, and as far as liability?
Yep, yeah, it's on our website too, actually, if you want to read through it. I imagine you don't, but it's there.
Okay, and it was touched, asked about the age limits and verifying the age. I'm assuming you have to have some kind of credit card payment?
You do, yeah. Everything's done over your phone, similar to if you've reserved a ride via Uber or Lyft. There's nothing physical there, there's no, like, you're not swiping anything. you're not swiping anything. It's all just done over your phone.
Yeah. Local manager is is he gonna, he or she gonna be like a franchise holder or just someone you hire?
Yeah, they're more just a a business. We're just outsourcing a certain segment of our business to a local representative, if that kind of helps you wrap your mind around. It's not a franchise because they're not, you know, they're merely just responsible for a segment of what we're doing. I think that to think of it as a franchise is is close, but legally it's not.
Okay. And what happens when that person doesn't work out, doesn't show up, doesn't labor is a real issue here?
Yeah. Yeah, I I think I think what's really nice about this opportunity is that this is free to start for a lot of businesses. If you were a potential franchisee for any type of business, you know, whether in the food or beverage space, you'd have to fork over hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes millions of dollars to get started. And that's out of reach for a lot of people. This is free to get started. You know, we don't ask for anything straight up for this, and they can start making money on the first day that they're doing it. So I think it's pretty unique. If this doesn't work out, you know, we have, again, I want to, I want to reiterate, this is the operation model that we have in every city. So we know what makes someone a good fit. We know what the ratio is between number of vehicles available and how many of these fleet managers we have to have out there. So it's a really rare occurrence where you wouldn't see vehicles on the road because that person maybe decided that, hey, I don't want to do this anymore. It's kind of just picked up by maybe that that second entrepreneur who's also doing this. But you're right, I'd be lying if I said something like that doesn't happen, where if an individual just says, hey, you know what, I gave this a shot for a couple of months. Turns out it's just not for me. Or they had a major life event, or they're, you know, moving across the country. Those things happen. And so we have a team built out to resource those businesses and make sure that at any point in time, there are vehicles on the road and and folks in Salina have the opportunity to use the service.
Okay, one last thing. Lauren touched on it. Just an example, there was one left in a person's yard or in front of a person's business, and they want it moved and out of there right now. Who do they call?
There is, yeah, there's like nine different ways you can get in touch with us, which is really great. So on the vehicle itself is going to have a sticker with a phone number, an email, a way to do so on our app itself. So that individual can do so. If on top of that, if they want to get in touch with the city, for example, you know, we we always tell the city, hey, you should put out a press release, you should put out information on your website to where you are never receiving any comments, any, any concerns, any complaints. That should all come through us. But if that were to happen and someone reaches out to you, you forward that to that local, that that your account manager, and that account manager will automatically triage that to the the local individual who can drive out there and mediate that hopefully in a matter of minutes or hours. So, you know, again, those things might happen, but I think it's a matter of kind of educating the public on, hey, what are the proper ways to get in touch with this vendor so that I'm not bugging the city on this?
Well, I can tell you, the research I've done on this, primarily the city of Topeka, that that is the number one complaint, that the things are just scattered all over. They lay there for days.
Yeah. Yeah, again, we're not the only business that does it there. So if you're getting complaints from someone, I can't speak for it for other businesses. Perhaps it's better to reach out to some other cities where we're the sole vendor there.
Well, it's something I think you said, Commissioner, that jogged my memory. One of the stakeholders that I didn't mention was OCCK. So we have had conversations with OCCK and how the redistribution points would also jive with bus routes and helping people to kind of connect to those services. So that's something else that's been considered as part of how this product could be used. Mike, do you want to talk at all about, you know, if this goes successful, some of the things that Bird's been looking at, like the motorized or the electric bikes?
We do have Commissioner Ryan on the line as well, if you want to.
Two of us, actually.
Yep.
But start working on the answer to that question.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Ryan is also on online. Did you have any questions, comments?
Well, the thought comes to mind for me that what's the consequence to the user of the bike if they dump it or leave it in an inappropriate inappropriate place, if they damage the bike? Is there some way that you go back on them? Their account is canceled or something? My experience has been I've seen these in ravines and and on docks. And I mean, some people just abuse them. Do they, can you geo track them to the the last user and and other consequences for them?
Yeah. So every time you end your ride, you actually have to take a photo of that vehicle. And we can audit those photos to see if there's repeated examples of someone being a bad actor. So it's pretty obvious to us if a vehicle ends up in a certain place, kind of, you know, maybe who was at fault. But oftentimes, you know, maybe that vehicle was laid up in the perfect place it should be, and someone came by and did something that they shouldn't. And so we don't want to put the onus on that person who was just using it because there's no way to prove that. But there are ways that we can disable people's accounts if it's proven that there was, you know, three or four, you know, strikes on on someone, and we see that they're not using the the service properly. We always reserve the right to do that. That's part of that user agreement. But yeah, again, I think those moments of vehicles being end up in certain places that they're not, you know, do they happen? Yes. You know, those things probably happened in some some larger cities, and it probably happened a couple of years ago when people were getting used to the service. Right now, those instances are fairly few and far between. If they do, they just make for, you know, fairly good headlines and and good news coverage.
Thank you. All right. And Mr. Butler, I have just a few questions. Are these used on sidewalks and streets or just streets?
Just streets. Yeah, I think it's really good to think about this as a bicycle. I mean, most cities are very minimal to the fact of wanting to get people outside, get people out of their cars and walking or biking or whatever that is. So for all intents and purposes, this is exactly like a bike. So which is why most ordinances or rules of the road apply to bicycles and scooters because they go the same speed. They have handlebars, taillights, two wheels. They're virtually identical. The interaction with the sidewalk is a bit unique because that's where vehicles are essentially parked. But when they're in use, it's always on the street.
And there, I'm assuming there's be difficult for the vehicle to determine if it's on a sidewalk or a street. Not the only place, but when I go home to Washington DC, there are a lot of people who will ride them on the sidewalk, which means if you're pedestrian, you got to keep your eyes open and learn how to zig or zag to keep from getting run out.
Yeah. And again, I mean, there there's enforcement involved as well. So if there's local laws that say you're not allowed to ride a bike or a scooter, you can technically be ticketed for that. And I think riders should if they're disobeying laws, as drivers should, if you run through a stop sign, for example. So that that exists, that's there. I think we do a really good job of trying to educate folks on what are the best behaviors? You know, how are you supposed to ride? How are you not supposed to ride? And so it's our job to continue to do that as well. But we are testing certain solutions in certain cities right now on sidewalk detection. So the vehicle can actually know if a vehicle is being ridden on the street or on the sidewalk. So that's still in testing phase. I think that's probably, you know, a few months out. We're only doing it in select markets. So as that improves and as that kind of grows in adoption, that's something that the city of Salina would enjoy down the road.
Right. And just a few more. Are these in cities with bike lanes to be ridden in the regular car lanes or bike lanes?
Yeah, the sad reality is I bet 80% of the cities we operate in don't even have a single mile of bike lanes. I mean, I bring up places even like, you know, Emporia or Great Bend, or Garden City, or Atchison, for example. I mean, none of those cities have bike lanes. And so they're just meant to be ridden on the street, kind of on the right hand side.
All right. And if a person wanted to use the bike, let's just say, go shopping, eat, sit in a park bench to eat lunch, and then run several errands, does it work out cheaper to engage the bike, then disengage it, and then start another separate ride with another unlock fee? Or is there a way that you can keep it for three hours without running up a, haven't done the math yet, but a 30 cents?
Yeah, I mean, so we do have other ways for you to reserve these. We also have ways to where you're not paying it just on a per minute basis. We're coming out with like a subscription model. We're coming out with monthly ride passes where you're just paying X amount of dollars per month. And that can lower your fee if you're, you know, a more frequent user. So I think it probably depend on on how long and where that individual was going to run those errands. But there are ways where if you were just going to pop in, I've done this countless times, where I just take one of these vehicles to the bank, and I'm just going to run to the bank for two minutes. And I want to make sure that vehicle is still there when I come out. So I'll park it on the sidewalk. I'll leave it basically. You can basically kind of hold it to where no one can take it. It's still going to charge you for that minute basis because you're technically reserving it. I'll pop in for two minutes, come back out, and then I'll take it and go. So there's plenty of ways to do it.
All right. And I guess this is more for city staff. What is the purpose or the basis for the fee that the company would pay the cities in, like a franchise fee, a licensing fee, or what?
We haven't discussed it too much, but I think it's basically a fee that the the communities have tacked on, I think, that maybe helped to to deal with the administrative side of it. I don't know, Mike. I would appreciate your feedback on that of what communities, because not all of them do it, right?
Yeah. So there's typically two things. So so the per ride fee that was talked about earlier, that is a fraction of what the total cost is for that ride. So if someone take a, if there were 1,000 rides, you know, next week, for example, and there was a 10, a 10 cent fee, right? So you're going to get a fee for that on an ongoing basis. So that's not what we're actually introducing. That's something that would come out at the end of this pilot program. What's a lot of cities have done, I think, you know, Derby, for example, I think there was like a $250 or, you know, $500 kind of fee, as Lauren said, to offset the administrative cost, to offset the time it is to kind of have these meetings, or for Lauren to get on the phone with me or something like that. So I think that's typically what you would see. And, you know, we're we're happy to do that, of course, if it makes sense to do so.
And on a related note, the the drop off pickup locations are outside of the right of way, correct? They are on private property?
No, they're on, they're on the sidewalk. That's, yeah, that's kind of the whole point of this.
So there's another aspect of it being in the right of way in terms of a franchise approach.
Okay. And it is a a problem. I guess in large city, you just learn to step around them, but from an aesthetics. It'd be nice if there are some general rules, you know, lean it up against the fence, don't leave it in the middle of the sidewalk. But I'm sure some of these are set up properly, and kids come along, knock them over, the wind knocks them over, and things beyond your control. What I would like to do, and I'll ask for your opinion, if you wanted to have Mr. Butler speak on the topic you just suggested, and then I'll have citizens ask questions, or I can have the citizens ask questions first?
No, I if if we could start with staff first, because there's three items I wanted to put out to Mr. Butler, just having been through the stakeholder meetings that I think you might find of interest. One is of the potential electric bike situation. Bird mentioned to us that they are looking at other vehicles. It's slightly different that it has a basket. So if you're going to get groceries or things like that, they are, I believe in backward or just they're experiencing the same supply issues that almost all of the world is. And some of that is not part of that pilot program. But if we went into a regular usership, you know, that might be something that he can elaborate on a little bit. I also think the other two things, Mike, is helmets. That question came up a lot. Do you have to have a requirement for helmets? Do you guys provide helmets, that kind of thing? And then also DUIs? How how does that work? And what have you guys experienced in other communities for drinking and scootering?
Yeah, yeah. So I'll take that one at a time. So the the bike, for all, I would say, just to keep things simple, at least for this year, this is solely a, you know, scooter concept. I know there's difference between scooters and bikes, as I mentioned before. They're basically the identical thing, right? They both go the same speed. They're ridden by the same type of person. They have two wheels and headlights, taillights, and brakes. I mean, that that's essentially it. So in 99% of our cities, you're going to see that we have scooters on the road, not bikes. The times that we add bikes to them are because cities require us to do so. But the interesting part of that is is it's a guarantee that the scooters will be ridden more often than the bikes. So if you're a city and you're wanting to, you know, enhance the transportation or improve transportation options for your city, most cities tend to opt towards a scooter because that's what their citizens want to use. The the next question on that, no, we don't require helmets. In fact, most states don't require helmet riding. We absolutely encourage it. If this is some type of, you know, premeditated trip, you should certainly wear one. If not, you know, there's there's something really against the law doing it. But we do have programs in place where if you were to take a, you know, photo of yourself next to the vehicle after your ride and send it to us, we're going to give you just money for that. We're going to give you credits in your account because we think that's the right thing to do, and you're kind of promoting safe riding. And then the, what was the final question, Lauren?
DUIs.
DUIs. Yeah, that's not something that that, at least I've really seen much of. It hasn't become a problem in any community to the point where that's a reason to kind of halt the program. I would imagine if you don't see that too much on a bicycle today, you're probably not going to see it on the scooter either.
If I could add one more, in terms of the communities that you've identified, how many of those are in the pilot stage? How many have transitioned beyond pilot? And how many didn't proceed beyond pilot?
So zero of them have not proceeded beyond the pilot. So every single one of our, I've either extended this program or in the process of doing so. So that's, it's a really good sign. Again, for whatever reason why, the state of Kansas has been hugely receptive to this. I always like to say this stat, and I don't know how this is true, but we're actually live in more cities in Kansas than even in California. So there's something in the water in the state, it must be.
I did have a couple of follow ups. It escaped me. I I didn't write it down. How how many did you estimate you would begin the pilot program with?
Anywhere between 50 and 75 would probably be on the road. And then if we feel like there's enough demand, we can add in increments of about 25. And we could even work with the city to notify them that this is happening. So if there are 75 vehicles in the road, and we say, hey, these things are being ridden all the time, the community is essentially asking for this. We need more vehicles out there. We can work with Lauren, whoever wants to be our main point of contact, and just informing the city on, hey, we're adding more vehicles to the to the road. You know, they'll be coming next week or whatever that cadence wants to be.
So would that go both directions? We got 75 and say, hey, they're not being used. We only need 50. Come get them?
We, yeah, I mean, we would be the ones to evaluate it, honestly. I don't see that being an issue. You know, 50 is pretty much the, you know, the the floor that we're going to deal with. So I don't envision that being a problem. But you but you're right. I mean, we'll always take the feedback from the city if we feel like things aren't working out or, you know, fleets need to be decreased. But in virtually all cases, it's going the other direction.
Okay. And I think as asked before, but how do they charge? And what is the value of each unit?
How do they charge? So their their charge is the same way you do your your phone. I mean, it plugs into a wild outlet and plugs straight to the vehicle. So that that local individual will have to have some type of lightweight facility and, you know, enough electrical outage to actually, you know, charge those vehicles on, if not a daily or nightly basis, basically just as needed. And then the, you know, that they're going to do that basically as a revolving door of different tasks.
How long does it charge last?
Usually about six rides, but it can go, it has a range of about 30 miles.
Well, I have heard a complaint from Walmart. Someone gets on one of the scooters there, and they get to the back of the store and it dies.
I think, yeah, a couple of interesting things that we learned that lead to that battery charge is the distance traveled, because we had several people in the stakeholder group who were like, what's the difference between using one of the bikes that OCCK and Blue Cross Blue Shield has put around town and these? I don't see anybody using those bikes. And it's not that they don't get used. But that was the kind of visual perception from somebody is that these are electric. So if you've got a backpack full of groceries, or you've just put in a 10 hour shift, or you you're going to make a walk that's longer than you normally would, that electric component can get you farther, faster, those kinds of things. And that's, that was kind of one of those interesting takeaways from Bird Scooter talking with that stakeholder group.
So whose outlet do they plug into? Who pays the electric bill?
Fleet manager, the local person.
Okay. And lastly, do you have statistics on car scooter accidents?
I do. Yeah, yeah. So most of the time, the reason for that we've seen incidents is probably due to the kind of, you know, carelessness on on the rider, or sorry, I shouldn't say carelessness, on the driver itself. So it's usually, it's not the biker or pedestrian or scooter that's getting the incidents because, you know, someone ran a stop sign or something like that. But those instances that, you know, a reported incident, our end happens once every 27,000 miles ridden. So I think you're, you know, much likely, or there's a higher likelihood of getting some type of incident with your car.
One of Commissioner Longbine's comments jogged a thought. Do you have an off season? Do you take take them out of circulation in the winter?
Yeah, yeah, we have to. Yeah. I mean, you know, we operate in tons of cities in Canada, tons of cities in Eastern Europe, Northern Europe, and in the Nordic countries, and gets pretty bleak up there, even more so in Kansas. So there's probably going to be months at a time that these vehicles will be off the road. That even happens sometimes in the middle of the summer. I don't know, maybe there's just a, you know, a rainstorm that comes out of kind of nowhere. Those vehicles are taken off the road, they're stored for a certain amount of time, and when it makes sense to redeploy them, that local Those vehicles are taken off the road, they're stored for a certain amount of time and when it makes sense to redeploy them, that local person will do so.
I think Mike touched on this a little bit, Butler, but there's a dashboard too that we have access to as a city. And that provides a lot of really interesting data from a parks perspective, trying to understand how many people are trying to reach our parks, which is something we don't readily have that kind of live data to. Also something we can share with OCCK as our transportation provider about how often people are kind of going on certain routes can help them to understand maybe where they need new routes or they need to expand routes. It also helps us to kind of understand where we've got kind of extended traveling that we may need additional pedestrian facilities. So greater sidewalks or multimodal trails, those types of things, really understanding kind of where that destination lies. So that type of real time data, we're seeing that even in the city management world, conferences are showing equipment that, you know, you're trying to collect that data of who's coming in and out of your streets, on your parks, things like that. This is that same type of, you know, what they call smart cities and real live data. So that's something that comes with the agreement with Bird.
All right, I think if we could give the citizens a chance to ask questions, give comments. No one? I see some physically fit people out here that might take advantage of this.
I'm just a little bit concerned on the drop offs. They'll be with them being, like Mike said, being dropped off at some resident or some creek or whatever. And I think before you look at this, see how often those bicycles are being used in our community. Because you see the bicycles put back into the racks when the people are done using them. Now, I've seen them riding them out with families riding them out at Bill Burke Park, but they take them back to wherever the, the bike rack is. And I think we've, my opinion, we have enough transportation here in Salina with the bikes and OCCK because those buses will take you anywhere in this community. And there's drop off and pickups almost anywhere in the city of Salina. So I would, and I would really talk to these other cities about how much problems they're having with these scooters. And that what Mike brought up with the lawsuits, that would, like, like Mike said, the city has deeper pockets than, than individuals. And I would, because you even have problems with motorcyclists, you know, they don't, cars don't look out for motorcyclists. How are they going to see these little scooters? Because I know my, my son almost got creamed yesterday on his motorcycle because a girl passed him on the right side of the road. But we need to look at that also. And then who's going to be responsible for that accident?
A question I have is if PD stops one of them or whatever and they have, and they arrest the occupant, whose problem does that become? Will PD end up having to have their towing services come get it? Or would they notify you guys and you would send whoever the regional, whoever your person is locally that deals with them? Or how would that work on the city side?
Yeah, you're saying if, if someone just ended their, their ride somewhere and, and they, and it needed to be moved?
No, if they got, if the law enforcement would stop them and they would end up arresting them, whose responsibility is that bike? Does a city have to impound it like they do the vehicles and then you guys come get them or how would that work?
Yeah, you could just notify us and we can triage that to our local person to get it moved. But it would just, you know, you can just move it back up on the sidewalk, be pretty, pretty easy lift.
Well, that would be a pretty poor criminal if this is the way he's trying to escape justice.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a personal car, so it's not getting impounded, not owned by that person, it's owned by a business.
Mr. Mayor, I can tell you that staff at a variety of levels, you know, we had engineering staff, we had parks staff and we had planning staff have reached out to the variety of cities that Bird listed to us that have Bird as a provider. I mean, many of the general concerns that we're all having, particularly when I'm done, where does this thing go? Is kind of a general overall issue, but we found no direct complaints specifically about Bird as a provider. And, and in general, most places said that the, the enjoyment that came from the community or the necessity of it for those that needed it was great enough for them to keep it as a community.
And I will say, when you look at who is using these and dropping them off in neighborhoods, it's very often the people who live in the neighborhood. And in a strange way, in, in some regards, it might be more suitable here even than in a large city. Because here, your public transportation, if you're talking about the bus, we have very rigid fixed limited routes out of necessity. You know, for me to go from my house to the hospital on the city go bus, I'm going to have a six block walk on one end of that trip or the other. And I could see if I got off the bus in the evening, oh boy, that's, I just don't feel like walking that. It'd be nice, and you can only hope that in a small place like this, the franchisee or the account manager will come pick it up soon. But I would hope that I would have enough care about where I put it in front of my own property that it wouldn't upset my neighbors.
Well, it was kind of interesting, we were in Topeka the other day, there was a bus stop and then there was a little pad and two of them were perfectly situated. I don't know if they were Bird scooters, but they were two electric scooters and they were nicely just where they're supposed to be. And so I think like we tend to see the ones that are scattered around, but they can also be in, in harmony and kind of put where they're supposed to be. I have another example of where they could be very useful in town. I had an employer share with us the other day that they're on in the far south end of town and the bus goes about as far as Walmart. And in order for their employees to get a little bit farther, they need to make that walk. Well, if you've done an eight, 10 hour shift and it's 100 degrees outside, do you really want to make that walk? You know, if we had something like Bird scooters where they pop on the scooter and get to a closer point, it's not perfect, but that does start to develop other options for people.
What's the speed on these? I guess we didn't ask that.
15, one, one five.
And then when they hit those slow zones, is it about five?
They actually get sent by about 10. The reason, you know, five, anything below that honestly just feels like you're walking and you went, why did I even take this thing in the first place? So that it's, it's kind of a sweet, it's just a matter of maybe in certain areas or certain parks, 10 miles an hour seems to be kind of the, the low point.
Oh, what is one of them valued at? What's the cost of them?
You want, like, how much we're purchasing them for? I think that's just something that's proprietary to us.
What, what's one cost?
Yeah, I think that's something that's proprietary to Bird. You can purchase them if you wanted to, you can purchase one for retail. We offer them, that, that they're on their website. If you wanted to purchase like a, a personal scooter, it's going to cost you, you know, anywhere between four or $600. But the ones that we design and manufacture specifically for, for ride share, that's a different price.
We have several of us were at a conference a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, that talked a lot about these scooters. And one of the things that's really improved in the last couple of years in the electric scooter industry is how long they last. A lot of scooters were almost kind of disposable and they're tending to last a lot longer now. And so they're more of a fixture in the community. So from an economic or an ecological perspective, they're lasting longer and not having quite an impact on what's going into refuse.
What is the average life of a unit?
It's about two years. And yeah, as, as Lauren mentioned, the early days, the candid answer is that we were basically buying vehicles or scooters off of Amazon or Alibaba and they would last four weeks, honestly. And so we had to kind of rethink how vehicles could be more ruggedized and more secured for kind of shared use as opposed to an individual use. And so because of that, we're actually on our fifth generation of a scooter. So similar to what, you know, Mercedes and BMW and Lexus, they come out with enhanced safety features, better tires, certain diagnostic systems, and those come out every single year. We do the exact same thing. We actually plucked vehicle engineers from some of the, you know, the, the most notable vehicle manufacturing companies in the world and said, hey, we need you to build a scooter that can last two, three, four years. And that's what we've done.
So next week's study session, we'll meet out at Berkeley Family Recreational Area. We'll have races up and down.
Yeah, I think we need a demo.
Yeah, and I, I think for, for what it's worth, we, we really would love to get started as soon as possible. And I mean, it sounds like there would probably have to be, you know, two readings on ordinance as, as well as the MOU. And I, I think bringing this service during the time of year where it's actually going to be used is, is right now, that's not around the corner, that, that is today. So we really want to get going as soon as we can so that the city can see holistically how this service is being used. And, and that means kind of, you know, getting to enjoy it and, and bringing it out today and making sure we have, you know, probably realistically eight, nine or 10 months of this.
I'm sorry, the city attorney has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners Greg Binkson, legal counsel. And I apologize, I had to step out of the meeting briefly, so I hope this isn't ground that you've already covered. But my question has to do, is based on personal experience. I've, I've ridden one of your scooters in downtown San Diego and I've seen them in Denver. In that personal experience, I, I understand everyone's concern about what do you do when you're finished with them? I can't deny that I was somewhat intimidated when I first picked one up and was expected to keep up with my sons who had experience with them. They were kind to me, but as you, the thing I was struck with is do I try to navigate the sidewalk and the intersections associated with the sidewalk? Or do I just head for the street? Is there a protocol or guidance that, that you all have for folks who are trying to figure that out? In a, I realize
Yeah.
Each city is different in that regard, but if you, and I don't expect you to be intimately familiar with every city you're dealing with, but in a community the size of Salina, is that traffic going to be predominantly on the street? Or is it a sidewalk, watch the streets situation or what?
Best. Yeah, so the reality of it is that most people are obviously going to follow the rules and the rules of the road say that you're supposed to ride these things on the street. In fact, if you were to pick up one of the vehicles, you're going to look down a sticker on the vehicle and what does it say? It says no sidewalk riding, because 99.9% of cities have some type of ordinance that says you are not allowed to ride a bicycle or a motor vehicle, sometimes even a skateboard on the sidewalk. And so it's our job to inform the public of this and then continue to remind them to say, the best places for you to ride this are going to be the street. You know, I, I, I can certainly appreciate that it may be, like you said, intimidating to ride it and you, and maybe you opt for a sidewalk. But that's technically breaking the law in a lot of places. So I think in a lot of cities and, and the cities that I mentioned before that don't have any bicycle infrastructure, I mean, you know, a city like Great Bend, for example, you know, there's no, there's no bike lanes there. You know, they're, they're kind of use this as a period to test and see, hey, what is the rider behavior? How are people interacting with this type of, of service? And so again, I can, I think it goes back to us doing a really good job of reminding people how to do so. And the city can even take that on as well.
Thank you.
You know, that might be an opportunity because we actually do have at least a fairly good basis of bike lanes here. You know, we, we might want to consider restricting them to bike lanes where there are bike lanes. Because the, the, the speed differential between the automobile traffic and the scooter probably leaves, leads to a lot of anxiety. Have to give the city attorney kudos for even trying it in San Diego. I don't think I would have tried it. I would try it here just because the traffic is generally slower, the streets are calmer, there's a lot of things to, to look for in a city like San Diego.
As one point of clarification, we don't currently ban bicycles from the sidewalk. So that's something that we could address as part of this pilot program or part of this adoption, either bicycles or motorized scooters or something along those lines.
Aren't, aren't they banned from downtown sidewalks?
Yeah, in the downtown, there are some specific regulations, but generally sidewalks are open to bicycles. So if we treated them, you know, synonymously, they'd be allowed on sidewalks.
All right, right, well, we'll let you wrap us up.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I guess the question is, where would you like staff to go with this?
Well, I'll ask my fellow commissioners first.
Go ahead, you look like you want to say something.
No, go ahead, you'll probably cover what I have to say anyway.
I, I personally would like to see some correspondence from some of the other cities that are doing it and not just the ones that they recommend. Just because obviously I'm going to give you the ones that I think are having the best results. Some of the things I heard that, that concerned me is Mr. Butler kept saying the city can educate, the city can do this. Well, unless you've gotten a lot less on your plate than you did have.
Well, I'm not going to be the main contact person.
I look at
We, we give you all of the, I was going to say, we, we, we give you all the information to put out. So you're, you're kind of just pressing send on like a press release or pushing send on, on somewhere on your website. Other than that, we have all the language for you.
And, and I know your phone number's on there, but we have an open forum, plus we have an email address. And so I can just imagine where those comments are going to go. Mr. Butler also talked about their, the people they use were entrepreneurs. Well, it sounds to me like they're more employees than entrepreneurs. To me, an entrepreneur has more investment in it that, that I think would do a little better. I, I also, as you, you talked about, I'm not always sure that the scooters will be where you need. And I understand your, your comment about the person that gets off at Walmart and, and needs it. Well, if there's not a scooter there, it doesn't do that person any good. I, and I still have a concern seeing a person riding a scooter down South Ninth towards the hotel with no shoulder. It just, so I guess before I would be willing to move forward, I'd need to see some documentation from other cities, both the, the good, the bad and the ugly. Just because I've seen what it looks like in Manhattan and I guarantee you, there's going to be people that aren't happy when they have three of them sitting near their, their building and they haven't been picked up for a day or two.
And from that feedback and correspondence with other communities, I think we're looking to understand what kind of commitment or resources a city
Resources are using, what the, how the public's responded, if they, you know, what's, you know, are they having complaints about? You know, that's one thing I did, I asked about the docking stations and I think the public mentioned that, that, you know, the bicycles get returned to a certain spot and these don't. So they just kind of get, can be throughout the community and, and again, it depends on how motivated that entrepreneur slash employee is to get those scooters where they need to be too, will make a big difference, so.
Mike Butler, if there was a relocation spot at Walmart's parking lot, which I think is on the map that we've been working on, and somebody knew that they were going to work the next three days, is there a way for them to reserve that there would always be one there? Or is it just kind of a, by chance, if they went there, there was one? I think kind of Commissioner Hoppeck's question.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can work with the city on, on certain locations that vehicles will be deployed every morning and then reposition throughout the day. I don't think we want to be limited to only those locations because those locations might change. We might say, hey, we have 25 spots, we're going to deploy vehicles and after a month, we realized that 18 of them actually aren't any good and need to be moved somewhere else. So that's kind of the benefit of having somebody that's a bit more fluid and that you can move some of those locations. So I think that's something that we can work on and, and we're always evaluating the rider demand. And we can even evaluate where someone picked up the app and realized that they couldn't ride it. And so we can take a look at those heat maps and make any adjustments. But, you know, I think one of the, the comments that they had mentioned was, you know, you have to take those bikes, you know, back to those stations. Well, the reason those bikes probably aren't used is that exact reason is that you have to take a bike from one spot to the next. If you wanted to take that bike home with you or you wanted to run some errands, you can't do that. So that's the trade off of something like this is that we're helping people get to A to B, whereas opposed to helping them get from station to station. If you help people get to station to station, they don't tend to go anywhere and they don't tend to use them. So that's, that's been our experience with other cities that have kind of docked models versus something like this.
Commissioner Langford.
I have a couple of comments. One, it seems like the linchpin to this working correctly would be the fleet managers and just getting the right personnel who are going to be conscientious. And it sounds like you have a setup where the more time these scooters are being used, the more money that person makes. So there is kind of an, an incentive to keep things squared away and away and user-friendly. During this conversation, I was thinking of something comparative in terms of, you know, somebody rents something, there's always going to be that opportunity for people to do things illegal, or mess things up, whether it's a rental car, even shopping carts, something as innocuous as a shopping cart. Most people put them away where they're supposed to, and then you have that outlier that maybe drags them down the block or two, and it ends up in a curb line. And I think that's more an oddity than the rule, and I think it's worth a try. And bottom line is, if we don't want them on the sidewalk, it's a motorized vehicle, then that's something we could maybe specify in an ordinance, and just hold the riders accountable for their behavior, and treat it like any other business endeavor.
Commissioner Longbine?
I think I would need to hear some input from citizens and business owners. Is this something they want? I don't see myself writing one, or anyone in my generation. Would your company be willing to advertise that this is who we are, what we want to bring? If you want to give input, contact such and such.
Commissioner Longbine, I could have letters of support available to the commission. Both universities have identified that this is something that they think their students would want. They've participated in this. Major employers have participated in these conversations when Byrd kind of first brought this up. Sometimes, you know, Byrd said to us, well, normally you adopt your pilot and then do all that. And I said, no, no, not here. We're going to need to have those conversations before we even get to adopting. So I can also share with you entities that have voice, that this is something they want. SDI has identified that they understand that there's a usership for this. We don't necessarily want it running down Santa Fe, if that helps in your discussion at all.
Okay, well, I would like to hear from comments from people in business, citizens in businesses.
It's probably pretty obvious, but it's maybe worth stating, all of us up here are probably not the target demographic. And I mean, I know it's an obvious statement, but when we're talking about what it is, it's a private business that wants to open up here in town, and for whatever reason, we have this dynamic where we're kind of deciding, hey, what, we're going to open the door or close the door to you. And whereas most businesses would do their own assessment, say, okay, this is a profitable place to bring said business, and we're going to open it up. And there's not this conversation. And I guess, kind of with that in mind, and just the idea that these probably aren't for me in particular, just being a late 40s, something, you know, there's probably a demographic that would love to see this, and maybe it's worth a shot for trial run.
You know, it's always rough as being the youngest one in the group here. I'm not sure what it's going to be like when I get to their age. But, you know, my mother went whitewater rafting in Colorado at age 74. You'd be surprised. My oldest active patient is 92 years old, 93. He rides the bike in Abilene every day. And I would guess, if a lot of these are being taken to downtown, I'm hoping that means that some businesses are getting some customers. But, you know, I think Salina's small enough, and our streets are quiet enough, that we can massage this as we go along as far as traffic control. And again, we do have the advantage of having bike lanes, which I think eases the speed differential between cars and something going 15 miles an hour. There will be some that'll be left on the side, but considering we haven't figured out how to get rid of discarded sofas on the sidewalk, you know, I wouldn't hold the bikes too accountable yet. I mean, we've got a lot of other stuff we haven't figured out how to get rid of. But I think it's certainly worth a, worth a try. Hotels, I think, would probably benefit if we have hotel clusters. Of course, where hotels are, they're going to have to navigate 9th Street, but then there's a 10-foot sidewalk on the side of it. So that's, again, a perfect place to, to ride it. So I would like to certainly see, see what it looks like. Is Commissioner Ryan?
May I say something? Leslie Bishop?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I'm with Salina downtown, as you all know, and I, to answer Commissioner Longbine, we did put it out to our merchants about what they thought about the scooters in downtown, and many of them were in favor, especially when they heard that the 100 North, 100 South, 200 South would be a no-ride zone. So in that respect, and being able to utilize the scooters on Fifth and Seventh, and then also being on the, you know, the slow zone, going across the, going across Iron, Ash, Elm, et cetera. So I do know that many of the merchants were in favor of having the scooters knowing that Santa Fe would be a no-ride zone. Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you for the information.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'm sorry.
Do we lose Commissioner Ryan?
That's what I was going, yeah, he's, he had to step away. So...
So what I hear is, staff, pull possible draft ordinance together, MOU, get feedback. I mean, any ordinance that comes in front of you has public participation in the way of people making comments on that. Would you, how, how else would you see us doing additional outreach? Like I said, I can gather some of those support letters from bodies, whether it's a business, or somebody who represents like student body or something like that, employers and their employees. I think probably a survey, I could make a pretty simplified survey to get some response back from other communities in Kansas. I'm afraid if we wait for, you know, written feedback, it's going to be a while. But if we can get down to some of these basic questions you had, Commissioner Hoppeck, I can easily get that. I could post some kind of survey on our website, if that would help Commissioner Longbine for, you know, 30 days, and let people respond that way.
Yeah, I think all, everything you've covered there sounds good, like a good idea.
Okay. Because 30 days would allow us to kind of get things drafted, get it into the review packet, and would have us in front of you. I know, as Mike mentioned, he's trying to get in front of you a little bit faster. But I think, based on some of your concerns, we probably need to do some of that due diligence before we're back in front of you.
I would still like to see a demo.
Well, Mike, would you be able to be here with some scooters and demo, once this comes in front of the commission or somebody within the organization?
I think, I think we'd be happy to do a demo, once this was approved, as we get closer to like a launch. Outside of that, I mean, there's, like I said, 17 or so cities that you can, you know, visit and actually see the product being done. It's the same product that's being done in hundreds and hundreds of cities. So I think if we were to do a demo, or had a local individual kind of, or an employee come by, it would be after this was already approved.
But would you be willing to come demo to the city commission as part of their, you know, legislative process in looking over the materials, if they wanted to know more about it?
With the purpose of the demo to be, to see how the scooter operates? Or, I mean, did you want to ride one? I mean, if you want to see how the system works, we need to go to a city where it's being used for real-life traffic, real-life individuals.
And I think to Mr. Butler's point, you'd want to go to one that, just recognizing that there are other operators, and so understanding that this is about Byrd at the moment.
Dale?
I'm going to Haze Saturday.
I was looking at the list, I think that's the closest location.
Yeah, and I guess I was thinking, maybe the manager at Haze.
Well, put, put one of those cameras on your helmet and just ride around.
Possibly the manager of Haze, or a representative, bring a couple over here.
Well, I can look.
Hey, you can run, run down to Haze or Great Bend and pop on for about 10 minutes. Well, we'll give you some free ride credits and everything.
Not with today.
Our treats.
That actually brings up a question that just popped up, since we don't have a scooter in front of us. The wheels on these scooters, are they pretty resistant to bumps, you know, cracks that kind of pop up? I'm assuming they have a little bit of give to them, or they, people don't do a face plant?
Yeah, yeah, they go through some pretty rigorous testing at our all-weather facility out in Southern California. So they go, you know, we basically have this long track where you can ride for, you know, a scenario where it's essentially miles, and it could be, you know, snow, rain, you could put bumps in the road, giant potholes, and see how the vehicle reacts to it. So that's what we've had, that's what we've done, is testing, to then build out the vehicle that would be coming to Salina. But yeah, this is, again, this is the same vehicle that you're seeing in, you know, those 15 or so cities already in Kansas that have this.
Do the wheels mar the pavement and sidewalks?
No, I would say not, not any more than just a personal bicycle, even if it's doing so. I'm not sure why it would, though.
All right. Mr. Butler, thank you very much for spending your afternoon with us. And did you have any parting comments or any?
No, no, again, I think we're, yeah, we're really excited about the potential for this. I will reiterate that we're trying to get going as soon as we can. So I completely appreciate the need for, you know, gaining input, gain, you know, some type of reaction from the community. Again, I think that's part of the reason why you tell the community that, hey, we're just trialing this out, we're giving this a test, as would other cities in Kansas have done, and see how that goes. But yeah, we love to get going during the months. I know during May and June, I'm sure you're going to see a lot of people out there that are, you know, out and about and enjoying the city, and what better way to do so than this type of transportation?
Right, thank you.
Yep.
We are done. We will meet back at 4 o'clock for the regular meeting.
Forward for contract approval. KSA 10308 limits the city's ability to issue debt at a maximum of 30% of taxable assessed valuation. There are some exemptions in the statute which allow us to exempt those from our valuation. As of December 31st, 2020, the city's 30% debt limit was $151,456,086. The applicable debt that was applied to that limit at 1231-2020 was $61,971,949, leaving a margin of a little over $89 million. Those numbers indicated that the city was using 41% of their legal debt limit at the end of 2020. As a reminder, the current charter ordinance sets aside different categories of projects and limits each of those categories of projects in a certain amount for annual debt financing. The process to adopt this charter ordinance includes a first and second reading with a two-thirds majority vote required. It also requires that we publish the ordinance twice, two consecutive weeks, and it does not become effective until 60 days after the final publication. It allows that within this 60-day period, a petition could be signed by a number of electors, and that at that point, if that petition comes forward, the ordinance would have to go to an election. This publication requirement is the same for all charter ordinance, so no matter what of these four options we would take, that process would be taken for each of those four options. Today's action, staff has identified the following options. You could approve on first reading the charter, the new charter ordinance, taking away the limits of the bond issuance for annual issuance limits. You could approve the ordinance on first reading with amendments as you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration of the ordinance and give staff direction on additional information you would like us to bring forward at a specific time or end date. You could approve the ordinance on first reading and also ask us to bring additional information for you to the second reading. Or you could take no action and provide staff with direction for how you would like us to proceed with the financing of the baseball project. I stand for any questions you might have. I know Mr. Skreg could answer any questions if you have any specific questions about the new charter ordinance or any of the processes.
What I'm going to do is have Commissioner Ryan go first so that we don't lose you from any time delay issues.
I'm sorry about the time delay thing. No, I don't have any questions. This makes sense to me. The other major cities, the first class are doing this, and I think the safeguards are there, so I don't have any questions for staff.
Commissioner Hoppe.
No questions.
Commissioner Lankowitz.
No questions.
Commissioner Longby.
No.
I guess I'm the only one with questions, so, Ben, sorry.
Tried to get away.
And maybe just be that I need to think this out loud. I could see where this would certainly streamline our process and bring some time certainty to our actions. The only thing I'm uncomfortable with is I'm assuming that the protest petition right was put in for a reason. I think the five of us would be sensible enough to not appropriate money we didn't spend, and future commissions the same. But, you know, once that right is gone, I don't ever see a future commission restoring it. I mean, it's, once it's gone, it's gone. One thing I would like to do is certainly streamline or get rid of all these different categories, because all we've done every time we encounter a project for which we don't have a category, we just create a new category, put a limit in it. You look at the limits of these projects, I mean, of the different categories, they're just, you know, wildly variable. They're probably outdated. I'm guessing these haven't been raised, I mean, for some of the streets projects and things. You know, so I would be comfortable with removing actually all the limits, having one category, but I'm not comfortable with getting rid of the protest petition. Would they right to have a, yeah?
I'll answer what I think was a question.
Okay.
The first thing you said was future commissions could not or would not come back to this. They could. They would all, just like you were having the option to change this ordinance today, and I'll ask legal counsel to correct me if I'm wrong, a future commission, say next year, if they felt like this was too lenient, they could come back and redo this charter ordinance and put the limits right back on. Any commission has that right to do that.
I guess, I can see them putting limits. I don't see the commission hamstringing, potentially hamstringing itself by saying, "All right, we're going to do this, but we want you all to think about it for 60 days."
Right.
And then let our action take effect. I think that's the part that would be gone forever.
Right. The other question I would, don't know for sure, I don't know if Greg knows or not, but we do publish when we are going to bond things, so there is publications and notifications to the public for those things. I don't think there's protesting against those, though.
So, and I may be restating Ms. Pax's answer just in a different way, but the protest period attaches to charter ordinances, not necessarily directly to debt issuance, but to charter ordinances. So I think what she was saying is a future commission could pass another charter ordinance that established dollar, you know, if they decided by experience they wanted to go back where we came from, they could pass a charter ordinance that would establish particular limits, and then we'd be back in the scenario of, you know, the protest period being applicable to.
Now, the limits in these eight categories, those are the amounts that we can bond without being subject to?
Yeah, based on prior action of the city commissions doing charter ordinance by charter ordinance, those are self-imposed thresholds.
So if we wanted to build another family aquatic park for, let's say, $20 million, that would be subject to a?
Charter ordinance amendment, and so the charter ordinance protest period would apply as you adopted that amendment.
So the protest, we could not approve it and then be subject to a charter, I mean, to a protest? Or would we have to change these limits in order to avoid?
Yeah, I want to make sure I'm starting from the correct scenario. In the event that you pass the charter ordinance that removed the limits, is that the hypothetical we're looking from?
I'm trying, I guess, to establish the way it's writ, the way we function now.
Okay, so currently, if we had a project, if we wanted, in your example, do another family aquatic park in excess of the $12 million, $12 million, $500,000 limit, we would have to pass a charter ordinance, either specific to that water park project and set a new dollar limit, or something that created broader discretion. And because it's a charter ordinance, then that protest period would apply.
So we could not approve it and then expect a public vote on it because it was over the limit? Or would we have to go the route of the?
We'd have to start with the charter ordinance to even have the authority for you to approve the debt.
The debt.
And then that charter ordinance would be what would be subject to a protest petition.
I will mention, as I mentioned two weeks ago, a lot of the debt that we issue has other statutory authority that gives the city authority to issue bonds, such as streets, because in the statutes for street improvements, it gives cities unlimited authority to issue bonds for those improvements. So the usage of this charter ordinance is not used for every single debt issuance, if that makes sense. If there's not, if there's not a statute that allows us to do it, we fall back to the charter ordinance. And as you can see by the two parks improvements, that's where we fall back the majority of the time.
So then how would this be, even when we, so we would be removing limits? So then there would never be the situation in which a protest petition would be an option?
Correct. Unless a future commission adopted another charter ordinance, putting limits back in place.
Right.
So I guess I'm still uncomfortable with something. I just probably called it the wrong thing, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to respond to your scenarios, but I think we're on the same page in terms of.
I appreciate you walking me through that. All right, I'll listen to other comments, and, thank you. Are there any public comments, questions, concerns?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Chad Farber from Salina. I spoke with you guys or approached this subject, I guess, last week, so you kind of know where I'm coming from. I appreciate the idea of wanting to streamline this procedure. I truthfully, it never entered into my mind what other cities of the first class are doing. We need to do what's right for Salina. I share the same concerns that the mayor just brought up. We are removing the opportunity for the public to offer that petition period or protest period during those 60 days, and it is perceived within the city from several people that have approached me and that I have spoken with as well, that we are trying to remove public input from the decisions of this commission, and that is never a good thing. This is, this is the idea of big government overtaking the individual taxpayer, the individual citizen, and that is not a good look for this commission, especially after the vote of no confidence that took place back in November. I was given a piece of advice many years ago, whenever you see a fence that is put in place and you're wanting to remove that fence, you should always go back and see what the purpose, the original purpose of that fence was before you remove it. And I would go back, and even when this was changed back in 2016, they did put limits on there. The limits are good things. They protect us as taxpayers. Perhaps there's another way to go about this with the streamlining, putting some different limits and combining things into one. But I would hope that, as commissioners, that you would leave the ordinance the way it is, figure out a different way to fund this baseball, if that's the main consideration for what we're going for right now. But I don't think this is a good move for Salina, so again, if you would take that into consideration.
Any other comments? I guess it's good to know there's something more exciting than this on the agenda. No other comments? Anyone online? Nope, all right. Any other comments, questions?
You know, I think as we discussed last time, you know, this wasn't an easy decision for me, but I kind of look at some of the checks and balances that we currently have in place. You know, we have bond counsel that works with us, and we always, whenever we increase our debt, we talk about our bond rating. You know, we have city staff directing us. I think the, all the steps we go through are still open to public comment, you know, and I think as, if we were trying to do a $20 million aquatic, and it was, the public didn't want it, we would get that feel from the public. And to answer your question, I think if a commission does abuse it, that a commission will come back in and restate this ordinance, after, you know, if somebody would happen to abuse it. You know, I think like on the baseball, I think we've, as a commission, and I hope other commissions do the same thing, we've thought through how we want to finance that, you know, using some of the additional general reserves we have, plus using the transient guest tax, so I guess that's, that was the reason I voted yes last time, is I do believe there's some checks and balances there, and I believe that hopefully the commissioners we elect are financially responsible, along with city staff and our bond council.
I understand what you're saying, I appreciate that. I guess the one check and balance that we'd be removing would be while the public has input, they don't have a say. Their potential say comes in the form of a protest petition, which, truth be told, happens rarely for our bond. I can't remember it occurring, but in fact, does it, has it occurred since you've been here?
Not since I've been here, not to my knowledge.
I mean, it's.
A city legal counsel may have more history than me.
Only that we did have the one occasion where there was a petition prepared in relation to the BIC, or the now TPEC, but then bicentennial center improvements. The submitted petition did not have the sufficient number of signatures, so that ended that.
It's just one of those.
And I find it.
It's up on the shelf, early use, but it's on the shelf.
Yeah, I find it interesting, Mr. Farber has been approached by the public, but I have not about this, so.
Well, and I think that underscores my other point. We mentioned the areas or the stages in a project where the public has a chance to give comment. I don't know how many people come to the meeting for the five-year CIP approval. It's not a, it's not like Easter, Mother's Day, or in church. I mean, it's not a hot topic meeting, other than department heads who want to make sure they get their funding. The approval of the project authorization is probably where public would be most involved. Generally speaking, I'd say by the time we get to approval of temporary notes and approval of project contracts, that horse's cow is way out the barn at that point. I mean, those are almost rubber stamp. We've already done the heavy lifting when we've approved it. So there's really one place where I think we get a lot of public notice, much like we've had very little public content or contact with today's item. It's just not high on most people's list. Let me go check the paper to see if there's going to be any bonding by the city today. I mean, certain people will, but they've already been here to the meeting, and in fact, they probably are involved in the process. I trust the five of us. I just don't know how much the city will trust the next five. Yes, ma'am?
Jerry Harp, Salina. Talking about the public awareness and everything.
Could you pull your microphone down?
Sure.
There you go.
Talking about the public awareness, and you haven't been contacted. In the public, we don't really hear about all of this unless we come here. People don't have access to a newspaper much anymore, and unless, has it been publicized somewhere that you're talking about? Been publicized in the paper? You know, you're saying that you haven't had any public interaction.
I know it's, it was published on our website, and I know it was published on, was it Salina Post or KSL, that this was coming before the commission.
Mm-hmm. And how long the notice was that? Couple weeks ago?
Thursday, what, 5:00? The notice that it's going to be on the meeting, the public gets pretty much the same time we do.
In part, that's why you do two readings as well, so that it's successive meetings.
Well, I, maybe I'm just naive about Salina being aware of things, but as far as I'm concerned, we have very few public that comes here. We have very few. I don't know, maybe you have a lot more knowledge of who gets online and sees. A lot of people my age don't get online and see that. They used to get it in the newspaper, but the newspaper was very limited, so I think you need to make people more aware by putting it on the radio maybe a little bit more, or have some discussions with KSL or your local KINA, so that we can be aware of things a little bit more. That's where a lot of people in my generation listen to the radio, and they don't all, as you can see, this is all the public you have, and that's why you probably don't get much notice, unless you get a lot of emails. Do you get a lot of emails from the public?
No, that's what I was saying, is we don't receive, I have not received any emails.
It's because people don't know about it. All right, thank you.
Is there a comment online? No, okay. Any other public comment?
Mayor, may I briefly?
Sure.
The only thing I, I hope this is helpful, and if it's only redundant, I apologize, but just wanted to be sure that everyone is tracking on, the charter ordinance is the mechanism by which any city in Kansas is able to provide substitute provisions for a statute that is not uniformly applicable. The statute that you are considering amending has been amended a number of times over the years, obviously, and that's generally the way cities throughout the state have had to deal with this matter. This statute is in Chapter 13, which means that it inherently relates only to cities of the first class. The last time the statute was amended was in 1968, and the limit of what latitude a city had to issue bonds under that 1968 language is $100,000. So every city of the first class has been left with dealing with this at the local level. Now, the phenomena we have had, and to Mr. Skreg's point, oftentimes, the referendum appears as though it's a project-specific referendum, when in fact, what it is doing is amending the charter ordinance to make provision for that particular project. So that correlation between a specific project and the referendum is not really a direct correlation. The correlation is with the need to modify the local ordinance as it sets the latitude that the governing body has. Does that make sense, or is that helpful at all?
No, actually, hearing it the fourth or fifth time, it's sinking in.
Well, and what I'm getting at is it's certainly a matter of discretion as to how the city of Salina approaches this issue, but it is something that everyone throughout this, every first-class city in the state has to deal with this in one way or another, or not bond more than $100,000 without.
And we've amended it nine times, so it's, this has been amended nine times in the city's history since that 1968 time.
Right, so it's always been with limits up to this point?
Yeah.
What's the practical functional difference that citizens would see without limits? As far as?
It'd be more discretionary on your part without the protest period associated with the charter ordinance. Beyond that, we'd still have to fund the projects, we'd still have to make the financial decisions that lead up to whether you wish to authorize a project.
So then without limits, unless we just wanted to add a category to this, there would, in theory, be no need to ever amend this again?
Correct. This would create kind of that broad discretion unless the commission wished to amend it to reimpose limits.
Mayor Davis, I'll make a motion, and we'll see where we go from there. How's that? So, Mayor Davis, I move that we approve on first reading Charter Ordinance Number 41, exempting the city of Salina from the provision of KSA 13-1024A, and providing for substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to general improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for said improvements and repealing Charter Ordinance Number 39.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading Charter Ordinance 41, exempting the city from provisions of KSA 13-1024A, and providing for substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to general improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for said improvements and repealing Charter Ordinance Number 39. Any other discussion? Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That would be a 3-2 vote, but we need.
Yes, the extraordinary majority of two-thirds is required, which translates into four of five votes, and by Kansas law, an ordinance cannot advance to second reading if it does not obtain the requisite number of votes to pass, so that in effect kills the ordinance.
And on that basis, and on the assumption that we previously had conversations about the project in particular, Bill Burke and the baseball improvements, then I think what staff will need to do is bring back an amendment that addresses that project, that dollar limit, to create enough authority to proceed with that project unless the commission directs us otherwise.
I would concur with that.
Correct.
Is the $4 million the total dollar amount of the project, or is that, does that include the use of general reserves?
Yeah, $4 million is the total project cost, and we identified $2.5 million to be bonded, funded by transient guest tax, and then another million and a half out of reserves. So the debt issuance would be $2.5 million, but currently, the limits are less than that in that particular category.
So will it come back to us at $2.5, or at $4?
We could do it at $2.5, unless we wanted a broader parks and rec category at a larger dollar amount. If we want to do it project-specific, we might want to give ourselves a little.
That's what I was gonna, that was my next comment, is I'd like to give us some wiggle room in there, not knowing, you know, what the bids are coming in at and stuff.
We can certainly draft the charter ordinance with the category and a dollar amount. The dollar amount's probably, an amendment to that's easy enough to make as you take action.
And we could always bond for less than that if.
Correct.
The project was less.
Correct.
Just out of curiosity, how much time is this going to add to the process?
Well, it'll be, you know, however long it takes to draft the charter ordinance, get it back to you for first and second reading. That protest period would have to run in either instance, regardless of how the charter ordinance is actually worded. We need to have that 60-day protest period built into the timeline, so probably two to three weeks.
I was gonna, that answered my next question. Is that something that can be done in a week?
Yeah, we'll see. We kind of have a draft of the charter ordinance, we just need to rework the wording, and we have a staff report that we can modify, so we should be able to turn it quickly.
Okay, thank you. All right, move on to development, 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize the city manager to execute a small cell master license agreement with Altel Corporation DBA Verizon Wireless.
Mr. Andrew.
I have the next four items. I thought I would set up shop here. The item before you is a draft of a small cell master license agreement with Verizon Wireless, and the use of the small cell master license agreement is a substitute for the use of a franchise agreement, which we have with some of our other service providers, and the basis for that is a law that the legislature passed that went into effect July 1, 2019, and that law effectively prohibits cities from entering into a franchise agreement or collecting franchise fees from Verizon as a wireless service provider. So for our other franchise agreements, those franchisees pay to the city fees based on their gross receipts within the city, and the legislature has prohibited that from being done in the case of wireless service providers. So this is a substitute for that, and so we can't base the fee based on Verizon's gross receipts, but we still may assess fees for the use of our public right-of-way. It's just limited by state and federal law. So Verizon has been interested in some time in installing small cell wireless facility network in Salina. Their plan would be to install those facilities in the public right-of-way throughout the city, and so they've requested approval of this agreement that would authorize them to use the right-of-way to install that network. It would allow Verizon to access the city's right-of-way. They could put facilities on existing or install new support structures, and we have in 2020 adopted some updated aesthetic standards for those that regulate where, if new poles are placed or other antennas are placed, where those can be located, how tall they can be, where, whether they're attached or freestanding, and we provided some. And we provided some graphics to your packet that just gives an example of what these antennas look like. And so this license agreement is based on a similar agreement that the commission approved with U.S. Cellular in 2020. And it's got, it's outlined the terms. There's a term period for the agreement. It grants Verizon the use of the public right-of-way. It sets out conditions on their installation of improvements. They can install their own poles if they can't co-locate on an existing pole. It provides compensation to the city for the use of the right-of-way, and it sets out construction requirements, and then also has requirements for insurance indemnification and hold harmless provisions. There's also a supplemental agreement that comes into play if Verizon requests permission to install antennas or equipment on municipal facilities. So at the intersection of Belmont and Ohio, we have some traffic signals there. There are streetlights on those traffic signals. Those traffic signals are owned by the city of Salina. If Verizon came in and requested permission to install an antenna or equipment on that, then the supplemental agreement would come into play. If they set antennas on an existing Evergy pole, then that, that would not trigger the supplemental agreement. There's some small areas where this agreement's been modified. U.S. Cellular was very concerned that the city might be able to increase fees over time, and so they requested that the, the language be modified to keep the city, limit the city's ability to unilaterally increase the fees. That language was deleted from the Verizon agreement, but the city can still only charge fees which are allowed by federal law. There were some modifications to Sections 2.1 and 8.8, and that was just to clarify what happens to Verizon's equipment if the agreement were to expire and they no longer were using the right-of-way. So there's three forms of compensation that the city would receive. If the Verizon attaches an antenna to a city-owned pole, such as at Belmont and Ohio, it has to pay rent to the city in the amount of $270 annually for each attachment, and that would go on during the life of this agreement. If they install their own pole or wireless support structure in the right-of-way, they've got to pay the city $125 annually for each of those locations. And if they install ground equipment to support that, then they have to pay the city $100 annually for each location as ground space. In addition, there is a, there's permit fees that were adopted by the city commission, and those are, if they submit an application to install a new antenna or co-locate that, they have a permit application fee of $500, but that's a one-time fee that's collected. The other fees that I referred to are collected annually. So we've identified options for you this evening. You could approve a motion that would authorize the city manager to execute the small cell master license agreement with Verizon. You can approve a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a small cell master license agreement with any amendments to the terms that you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration of this item if you think additional information or amendments are needed for further consideration, or you could take no action this evening and provide further direction to Verizon and staff. Staff would recommend option one, and we'd be open to any questions that you have. Do you believe we had representatives of Verizon that were planning to join the meeting via Zoom?
Okay, I'll start with Commissioner Longby.
Sorry. The right-of-way, is this, I recall a few years back, there was an issue placing these standalone towers on Marymount Road. By passing this, does this take property owners out of the equation?
What we had before was a process that was in the zoning ordinance, and we had items based on zoning, and if you were placing a, a new structure in a residential area, then there was a public hearing before the Planning Commission. In that particular case, the Planning Commission acted, and the neighborhood residents protested, which took that particular item to the city commission. This eliminates that, so there's, there's not going to be any public notice involved, and so we would fall back on the aesthetic standards that are in the ordinance that's attached to your report. So it would be an administrative function, but we've tried to write the aesthetic standards in a way that you're not going to have, be able to put out poles, or boxes, or things in, in locations that would be objectionable. And in most of the discussions we've had, at least with U.S. Cellular Group, we've looked for places like straddling the lot line between corner lots and staying away from the front of residences, but there would not be a public notice and a hearing requirement like was done on Marymount Road, because these are, provisions have been taken out of the zoning ordinance, and they're in the right-of-way management ordinance.
And Mr. Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was in response to the legislation that was passed? We, our authority was altered by that?
Well, there, there was that, and then the FCC has, is known for issuing what they call shot clock notices, where the shot clock gets shorter and shorter all the time, where cities have to respond to permits within a, a period of time, and the time limits on which we get to review and act on a permit don't allow us to have the public notice and hearing process. So we eliminated that and moved all the requirements from the zoning ordinance to the Chapter 35, the right-of-way management ordinance. There's currently about 35 installations that are in the community already, but those were done by Ideatech, and those were done through a franchise agreement with Ideatech that the Kansas Legislature took away cities' authority to use that as a tool.
All right. That's it? Commissioner Lenkowitz?
No questions.
Commissioner Hoppe?
As far as the, you know, the, the rent that we're able to charge and all that, that's all set by statute, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's by federal. It's through FCC limits that, that get updated periodically, but there, there's, you've got the legislature that's got involved, and you've also got the FCC that's involved, and you basically have to line up in each column and make sure you haven't exceeded the caps that they have established. But the whole, everything that the legislature and the FCC has done is to try to streamline the installations and not.
I remember when we looked at this before, we were pretty much, our hands were tied on what we could kind of do, and basically, I guess, I look back, they had really good lobbyists.
They, you know, they described it as an essential service, and the deployment would be hindered if they had to answer to local regulations, the need for standardization. And my recollection is, the limits that are set by FCC and the fees, we still have to be prepared to demonstrate a nexus of actual cost that, that attach to the fee that we set, on the assumption it doesn't exceed the limit.
Commissioner Ryan?
I have no questions. I, it's frustrating, but it felt all along that our hands are pretty much tied in these matters.
All right, thank you. As far as the location criteria, these are fairly absolute, such that a resident could take this list and say, no, you really aren't going to put that pole off to the side of the front of my house if it's not at the property line?
Well, in my experience, and I, I can, I can only, because of, we've only gone through it one time, but the way that we had done it before is we had 30-some locations that we were looking at, and we went into a room with Google Earth and just started looking at locations and saying, well, there's an existing pole there, so why don't you utilize that existing pole? If, if a location looked like it's going to be obstructing the driveway, or in front of somebody's front door, or things like that, then it's our experience that, that these are fairly location-specific, but that the providers are willing to work with the homeowner, with the property owner, and with staff to get it in their preferred location, but not get it in a location that's going to be objectionable. Obviously, the homeowner can't veto it because it's, it's right-of-way and not their property, but these are designed to put the providers on notice of what is considered to be acceptable and unacceptable locations, and if somebody, if a provider chooses an unacceptable location, then we're going to deny the permit.
Okay. And this picture, Paige doesn't have a number, but it's a 24-inch by 60-inch, I'm gonna call it antenna for lack of a better term.
Yeah, what, what most of those illustrate is that is a shroud, and so you're, you're going to have the, you're going to have the antennas, but they're, they're enclosed in a canister, so they're, what you see is the, the canister that's enclosing the antenna and the equipment, but not the antenna itself.
Are these bigger than the U.S. Cellular ones that are up now?
U.S. Cellular doesn't have any up now. The, the ones that are up there now are from Ideatech, and most of those, the, the limit was 24 inches wide and 60 inches tall when they're mounted to a pole, and none of those exceed that.
Right, and can one pole hold two of those?
Generally not.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the public?
One more from here, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Surely.
So there are a lot of providers out there. Is it a, I don't, I would like to think it wouldn't happen, but is it a possibility that three or four more other companies are going to want to begin in putting in their own systems? So we have a vast number of poles.
Well, the, the guidelines is they're established, establishes a preference for co-location, so we're gonna look for, when we're working with them, we're gonna look to co-locate on an existing structure first, and then if that's not feasible, then you'd be looking at, at a new pole. But we cannot, we cannot force U.S. Cellular and Verizon to cooperate or co-locate. They're, they're independent actors, and we can't say, well, U.S. Cellular has a pole there, so you need to share that with them. We don't have that authority.
Okay.
But I, we have, we have Ideatech that's already out there. U.S. Cellular has an agreement, but they haven't installed anything yet, and Verizon is the third provider. We're having some discussions with the Bluebird Network, but we're not sure what they have in mind yet. So there might be two others perhaps, but there's a limit to being able to saturate the Salina market, so I wouldn't see more than one or two of these beyond this.
Thank you.
I got another question. Say they put this up on top of a streetlight pole, do they modify the pole, put a, a just, adjustment to, you know, a stob on top of the pole, or do they replace the pole?
No, in most cases, they would do an analysis of the pole to make sure it could support it, and then they would, they would, if it could, then they would just attach it to the top of the streetlight pole slash traffic light pole. There's, I can think of about four, four cases with Ideatech where they determined that the existing power pole that was there couldn't support the structure, so Ideatech paid Evergy to install a new pole in the exact same spot that was more structurally adequate to carry the load. So there, there have been cases, but that would only occur if it was determined that the pole that was there wouldn't support the weight of the, what they wanted to put on it, in which case they would be obligated to replace the pole at their cost.
So this would be giving them clearance to put mountain things on city-owned stuff. What about the Evergy poles? Do they have to clear this with Evergy?
Yeah, they have to have pole attachment agreements with Evergy, and it started out kind of rough with Ideatech, but the vast majority of Ideatech's installations are with Evergy, and so Evergy was very resistant at first, but now they're, they've got established procedures for that, so we're always going to look for co-location first, and then if we can't, to independent structures.
And what is Ideatech?
Ideatech is a, they are, what they are is an infrastr, wireless infrastructure provider. They don't provide services. What they did is go out and establish locations, and then they rent their antennas and equipment to Verizon and U.S. Cellular. So they're already utilizing that. These would only be for ones that Verizon would install and own themselves, but right now, Ideatech is a company that tries to make money by selling their antenna services to Verizon, U.S. Cellular, and others, T-Mobile.
Any other questions, comments? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a small cell master license agreement with Verizon to allow the installation of a small cell telecommunications network in the public right-of-way.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a small cell master license agreement with Verizon to allow the installation of a small cell telecommunications network in the public right-of-way. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We can move to 7.2.
Item 7.2 authorized city staff preparation of a special assessment engineering feasibility report for the unimproved portion of Cedar Ridge Drive, the direct access perimeter street serving the Cedar Point addition.
You do have the whole afternoon here.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, the, there was extensive work done by city staff in 2016 to try to address historical challenges the city has had, and trying to figure out ways to finance direct, what we call direct access perimeter streets. Those are streets that don't, they're not inside or interior to the subdivision, but they provide the primary access for getting to the subdivision. And we had discussions about that as relates to Holmes Road and Markley Road, and now we're going to have that discussion about Cedar Ridge Drive. And so, if you recall, last fall, the city commission reviewed a proposed plat for, known as Cedar Point Edition, and that was reviewed by the commission on September 20th, 2021. And that's a proposal to plat 22 lots on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive to create individual building lots. At the end of the year last year, you approved or authorized staff to prepare a feasibility report for all the internal improvements serving that subdivision. What was not included in your authorization was needed improvements identified by staff for Cedar Ridge Drive. There's about 550 feet of frontage of Cedar Ridge Drive that's next to Cedar Point Edition that did not get approved, improved to city street standards. And so in December of 2021, we did not have accurate cost estimates for what that street improvement project would entail. We have now received those cost estimates, and we have an opinion from the city's bond council that those improvements can be assessed to all 22 lots in the Cedar Point addition. So the developers are Kevin and Stephanie Cool, and they're currently in the process of installing infrastructure across the street in Phase 2 of the Cedar Ridge addition, and they have filed this follow-up application, asking the city commission to authorize the preparation of a feasibility report to determine the feasibility of And they have filed this follow-up application asking the city commission to authorize the preparation of a feasibility report to determine the feasibility of improving Cedar Ridge Drive to city street standards. And that could occur through a separate benefit district, or more likely would occur through rolling that into their internal special assessment district. So this is being brought forward to you as a separate item because it was not voted on or acted on by the commission last December. So the, the request is to allow engineering to prepare a feasibility report and cost estimates for that. And so under our policy, there's an application that's filed, and then the city commission reviews a number of factors to determine whether you want to authorize use of special assessment financing. So this particular section, the 550-foot section of Cedar Ridge Drive, was annexed in 2004. We've been maintaining this section of street since that time, and so making these improvements is not gonna add to our annual street maintenance. It may actually reduce the cost of street maintenance because of the new and improved driving surface. It won't have any impact on utilities. It's, it's a street improvement only. If you were to approve this, it wouldn't involve any expenditure of city funds. All the costs for the street improvements would be borne by the benefit district. And so as we looked at the projected housing price points, they identified they would have housing in the $250,000 to $375,000 price point and possibly some above $375,000. They projected that they would be trying to sell the lots in the subdivision for $33,000 to $46,000 a lot. And so in our most recent research, we found that there's a grand total of nine existing homes in Salina on the market within that price range. And then we further determined that there's four existing homes on the market in the plus $375,000 price range. So there's 13 total existing homes that are on the market within that price range. And if you're looking for comparables in terms of lot prices and price points, this would be comparable to Phase 3A of the Stone Lake addition, Phase 1 of Magnolia Hills Estates Number 2, which is east of Markley Road, and comparable to River Trail addition, which is north of Magnolia Road. All three of those are nearing full buildout. And then if you've been on Markley Road, you'll see that on the east side of Markley Road, there's infrastructure construction underway in the Wheatland Valley addition. And if that is complete, that will add 29 lots to the housing market. Now, the developers are anticipating full buildout of Cedar Point in five to 10 years. They're not proposing any innovative housing products, just single-family homes. Our projection is that before this project, we were looking at special assessments in the $35,000 to $36,000 range per lot. If you assess the cost of Cedar Ridge Drive to these 22 lots, that's gonna add an additional $10,000 per lot, and so that would put the specials in the range of $45,000 to $46,000 per lot. And on page five and six, we've given you some comparables. They're not all apples to apples because they're not all full 100% special assessments, but you can see that, for instance, in Magnolia Hills addition number two, Phase 1, which was approved fairly recently, their projected specials are $43,000 a lot. So it's possible that these lots could be subject to multiple benefit districts if a separate benefit district is created, but we think if we time this out right, it would all be done as a single benefit district. We've looked at all 22 of the lots. In Cedar Point addition, they all appear to be buildable. Cedar Ridge Drive is classified as a collector's street, but right now it's still a rural design extending east over to Markley Road. And so the live Salina plan shows a need for 129 additional owner-occupied housing units in the 225 to 300 price range and 128 in the 300 to 400,000 price range. We did want to note, and we have a map in your packet there, that the benefit district for Cedar Ridge Drive does not include any lots in Valley View Estates that butts the south side of Cedar Ridge Drive. Only the 22 lots within the Cedar Point addition would be assessed for these street improvements, and we have obtained an opinion from bond council that Cedar Point, all 22 lots can be included in that district. So as of December 31, 2021, the city Salina is at 43% of its debt limit, and so we have identified for you your options to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of viability for Cedar Ridge Drive for your future consideration. You could postpone consideration of this item and provide additional direction to staff, or you could vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparation of an engineering feasibility report at this time. I would note that attached to your packet were cost estimates for both asphalt and concrete options. Just by way of, of background, the Cedar Ridge Drive did not exist until 2004, and it was built as a connector between Marymount Road and what was old Cloud Street. And literally, the improved surface stopped right where it intersected with the original Cloud Street. And so since Cedar Ridge Drive next to the eastern portion of the subdivision is old Cloud Street, it's never been improved, leaving a gap in the, in the, the road network. And so this, I, the cost that you're seeing is to take 550 feet of Cedar Ridge Drive where it ends today and extend it to the east edge of the subdivision. With that, I'd be open to any questions that you have. We do have Justin Owens here, who prepared the cost estimates and is representing the Cools as their design engineer.
As well as the Cools themselves.
All right. Commissioner Ryan, any questions?
I have none.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoppick?
Looking at the page, what is it, five? Magnolia Hills Edition Number 2, those specials are higher. Was that because they were assessed, those lots were assessed for improvements to Markley Road?
They have not yet been assessed for Markley Road. Those, there, there's certain traffic count figures that have to be met before that occurs. So those specials are primarily because of increased costs. And also, there was, there was a period of time where the city commission was not granting 100% financing, in some cases 80%, in some cases 75%. So for instance, in River Trail, the city commission authorized 75%. So those, those specials are gonna be lower because they only represent 75% of the total cost. But the most recent benefit district created was Magnolia Hills Estates, and most of those, those numbers are just reflective of increased materials and construction costs.
How was Cedar Ridge Drive assessed when they did the curb and gutter that, for the remainder of that drive?
I'm not sure if Mr. Wood knows that he has all those drawings in a folder there, but the, there is, it's basically started at where it intersected with Marymount Road, went to that point, and every property in Cedar Ridge was assessed for Cedar Ridge Drive, and then all the properties on the north, the properties in Grand Prairie, there's a vacant tract there. And the oddity here is this is a nine-acre parcel, and about four and a half acres of this nine-acre parcel was included in that benefit district, and the, the eastern portion was not.
Okay.
So basically, it was 50% north side, 50% south side.
And so even though a majority of this Cedar Ridge Drive actually butts up against Valley View and to the subdivision to the north, there's no, there's no taxing of the, of those.
Well, this, the only place that it abuts is it butts the east half of Cedar Point, and it butts two lots in Valley View.
Right, but those, those areas still benefit from the upgraded, correct?
They do.
Okay.
And so when this was looked at, it was determined by bond council to be looking at total benefit, that potentially you would have to assess every lot in Valley View Estates, and to do that would probably result in the benefit district not being able to be formed because they would have more, a majority of the land and the property ownership, and could essentially block the improvement from being made.
Yeah, that's what I, I figured, but it just, it just, it seems almost unfair to me that these 22 lots pay for improvement to roads that actually benefit two other subdivisions, but it is what it is.
And I certainly don't want to speak for the Cools. There's quite a bit of conversation about that in terms of options, and Mr. Andrew discussed earlier getting legal opinion from bond council about the ability to kind of broaden that, that benefit district to include the property that adjoins improved Cedar Ridge Drive to spread that out.
But we'd never get approval because you have to get, yeah, that's what we ran into when we were discussing the Magnolia, you know, too.
Right. And, you know, it may be, it, well, one other way to look at it is from our code standpoint, the perimeter road requirement is imposed on new development that wishes to take advantage of an existing road. The residents of Valley View wouldn't have any obligation to make, you know, fund any improvement but for if we could get them into some type of benefit district, which is not workable. So this scenario is with the consent of the developer as the applicant and is permissible by way of bond council's legal opinion.
Right. Commissioner Lank, what?
No questions.
Commissioner Lank, what?
I will say I did enjoy reading the history here.
Well, it's kind of important to know how things became, the way that, I think the, one of the things that's most interesting is that there was a master plan put forward in 1988, and it was pretty much followed to a T.
But prior to Cedar Ridge, the connection between Marymount and Markley was Cloud Street.
Yeah, it just ran straight down the hill along the north edge of the golf course. It was just a gravel, washboard road, and so the Graves Trust had a, a vision to get rid of that and to replace it with a, a road that kind of cut through the center there, and that was used as a route for a water line that connected the new Markley Road Water Tower to Marymount Road, and then the street was basically built on top of that water line.
Mr. and Mrs. Cool, is, are they gonna be the proprietary developers here, or will these lots be sold?
Well, I'll let them speak to that, but they're not, they're not necessarily going to build every single house in the subdivision. They may sell to individual builders or even to individuals, but they will be the developers that will be responsible for getting the infrastructure in place. But once the infrastructure's in place, there could be multiple builders or individual lot buyers that would build the homes on their own. But they will be the developers to the point to where the infrastructure's installed, then we're ready to issue permits.
Okay. I just recall the previous development with Mr. Hayworth was he.
Yeah. In case of Mr. Hayworth, he would not let other builders build in his subdivision, but that's not gonna be the case here.
It's not gonna be the case here, okay.
Okay, just to, just to make sure I'm not reading this wrong. The lots are 46, and the specials may go up to 46. So that's potentially $92,000.
If you had a $46,000 lot that you purchased, you could potentially have $46,000 in specials in addition to that lot price.
Okay, so it's just a rhetorical question. I'm not sure who I'm asking it to, probably the whole room. But with the live Salina plan, you know, will we have these price divisions of the houses? I'm just gonna take the 250 to 375,000 dollar range. I'm assuming that does not count the extra $100,000 that's being tacked on to this price. I'm just wondering which, when we say 250 to 375, if I read that, I'm thinking lock, stock and barrel 250, I can get in a hottest.
Plus the lot.
Plus the lot, plus the specials, so it's, it's really a different price range that we're, that the buyer actually has to deal with, and it's.
Well, and, and again, the Cools may need to speak to this, but on the assumption that you're buying the home and the lot's been either, you know, funded by the developer or the builder, that lot purchase price may be in the home purchase price, but the special assessment certainly would be above and beyond that.
Right, and this question's not unique to them, so I didn't want to bring them up here to get in a defensive posture, but just, you know, when, when we're using these pricing categories, you know, it just looks like there's some significant extra costs that aren't getting factored in, you know, when we assess the housing into, housing needs in a certain category.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not prepared to say that the lot purchase price is above and beyond the home purchase price, depending on how that, that deal is structured, but specials certainly are separate and distinct.
Definitely, okay.
And they're paid, you know, on an annual basis over 15 years.
Because when we look into affordability of housing, it's, that's another little, not too insignificant monthly fee that has to be.
Right, and the consultants that helped put the live Salina plan together were certainly aware of special assessment financing was the mode of operation in Salina, so I think they took that into account to some degree in terms of stratifying price points and how many that we need in the community, and we, we do try to track so that we're at least striking a balance in terms of home price points.
Right, but our price points here, or these divisions to get in the door, are not all-inclusive prices.
Correct. Specials are separate and distinct.
Okay.
I don't know if it helps or not, but when a new construction home is listed on MLS, traditionally, the lots included with the price of the home, the specials are usually left out of the list price. And to me, it would be, it would make sense that that, these numbers are based on that fact, but.
So most new house listings are a lot, and of course, you can't get the house without the lot.
The lots included with the price of the house, but the, the specials are left off there, and it's a separate financing deal. But Mike or Commissioner Hoppick could probably answer to that more.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, like I said, it wasn't a question directed at anyone, I just wanted to make sure that my thinking was.
Makes sense to me.
Was, was real, just so when we have people say, oh, I'll be able to afford that neighborhood. Yeah, but, you know, just, okay. All right, any comments from the public?
Ben Windholt Salina. Well, I can tell you, Mayor Davis, that that's not all. Two weeks ago, I was getting into the housing market as far as purchasing a brand-new home. All right, so the specials are not included in that, and if you'll go with his lot number, you're looking at another $255 a month for 15 years. What isn't known, and I found out through the realtor, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city has a rule that every brand-new construction that's done also has, if possible, in the land area, you are on the hook for drilling a well, putting in a sprinkler system, and sodding, not seeding, but sodding the lot. I asked him, I said, well, what is the cost of this? They gave me a cost of $18,000. So not only do you have specials, you've got a city rule of around $18,000 for every brand-new home that's being built in Salina right now. brand-new home that's being built in Salina right now.
Yeah, I guess I can address that, the city has no such rule and that is between the builder and the buyer. We don't specify seeding or sodding, we don't require irrigation, we don't require that wells be drilled, none of those things are city requirements. You have subdivisions that may have some individual covenants or you may have a contractual thing between a builder and a buyer, but none of that has anything to do with the city of Salina.
Well, there was no covenant on where I was looking and this is what I was told, that this is a city rule, that it has to be done, basically. So somebody needs to inform these builders and realtors out there that that is not the case.
What might be good would be after the meeting, if you have to leave Mr. Andrew with specifics and he can.
Because I can tell you that I personally review every residential building permit issued in the city of Salina and put conditions on them relating to sidewalks and park fees and things like that. The city of Salina has never put a condition on a new home construction relating to sodding or seeding or wells or irrigation.
Which I found that quite interesting because Salina has a water problem anyway. So like out in Stone Lake, they were making you drill a well. Up on Ridge Hill, you had to tie onto the city water. Now, it's like if you were mandatory that you had to do a well, you're just sticking a straw in the bowl of water that's underneath there and it's like, we really don't have that much water to be able to do those type of rules. I found that kind of odd.
And I don't think that's part of covenants and restrictions either that.
No, no, this was no covenants, both lots we look at did not have covenants, so it wasn't part of the covenant program. This came from the builder and the realtors that were selling his homes.
Have them watch today's meeting and then have a discussion with them in about two days after that.
Right, and they were saying, you know, the argument was that the rest of the homeowners on these lots didn't want somebody coming in and never doing a yard, you know, to where it looked trashy, you know, basically, and I understand that, but making you put in a well and a sprinkler system, wow, I mean, it's.
Have another conversation with them.
I will.
Whether you were furnished copies or not, there are private restrictive covenants in, on Ridge Hill and in Stone Lake, there's private covenants that apply to both of those developments.
Okay, thank you. The Coles were going to come up and speak, I'm going to let them come up next just because they may have information that will be useful for the next person who wants to speak.
I'll do my best. Stephanie Cool Salina. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the city staff. We had a little bit of confusion back in December and kind of January, February, kind of figuring out, you know, where everything was at with Cedar Ridge Drive. And so we had two at-length meetings with city staff and our engineer to get where we are today. And I just wanted to publicly thank the city staff for working with us and helping us to come to a reasonable solution. It's not ideal for any of us as far as, you know, the cost, but our goal was to try to minimize any additional infrastructure costs to people that were purchasing lots in Cedar Point, so that was our purpose. And we do want to just publicly thank the city for working with us on that. I, you know, it's not ideal, but I think it's workable in that regard. So in answer, I think you had a question about, was it?
Who's going to build?
Who's going to build? Thank you. Our intention is to open it up to other builders. We do have currently over in Cedar Ridge, we have a preferred list of builders, that would be our preference for builders, but certainly we're going to open it up because our goal is to get these lots developed and built as quickly as possible. So in answer to questions with regards to specials and total costs of homes, I think it's important to note that, you know, Kevin and I may just sell you a lot and somebody else may come in and build it. So to say that the cost of, you know, you may individually purchase that lot, so your cost of the home may not be, the true cost of building that home may not include the lot because you've already purchased it, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, okay, so just wanted to be clear on that, so it just depends on who's actually purchasing the lot for construction, so just wanted to be clear on that. And specials are obviously not part of that as Commissioner Lenkowitz clearly stated, so, you know, we know that. And most people that are buying in a new development are typically aware and we actually have that in our marketing. You know, we had some projections, I think we do need to go in and update our projections because originally, you know, we'd gotten some updated costs and so we want to be, you know, very transparent in what the projected costs of the specials are and we're trying to do that. I do want to clarify, I'm not sure that the cost of the homes that Dean mentioned, 250,000, I don't know where that number came from, I don't know that that's realistic and if we made a mistake in our application, you know, forgive me, but we're, you know, these homes in that neighborhood, the covenants are going to be around 1,600 per square foot, or 1,600 square foot, and so with the cost of building today, you know, you're probably looking at around $200 or $200 per square foot and that's probably on the low side. So I just wanted to be transparent with that. And then I also wanted to be transparent in the fact that the average price of the lots is going to be around 46,000, so they range anywhere from 38,000 to, I think, maybe 60-some thousand because we do have some lots that are larger that align up towards the municipal golf course, so those are going to be a little bit higher because they are a little bit larger. So just wanted to clarify those things and we certainly would appreciate your support in approving, you know, authorizing the feasibility study and certainly we'd be glad to answer any additional questions that you might have while we're here.
Just as a clarification, I think that 250 number came from a range that's in our criteria of 250 to 375.
Okay, okay, just wanted to be clear that I don't think we're going to be able to build, as much as we'd like to, I don't think we're going to be able to build up there for that, so, yeah, any other questions?
Do you anticipate, since this gets going, building model home or spec homes?
You know, we hope that the market won't require us to do that, but again, we don't want to be sitting on these lots, so if it does require us to do that, we may do that, but it's not our intention. We really wanted to do custom homes as much as possible, but if we need to build one to get things started, certainly that's an option. But, you know, we've already had quite a bit of interest, just on the way in, we had a request, somebody called about Cedar Ridge, now that we've got infrastructure actually going, dirt is moving, so we're excited about that. We've had several inquiries on Cedar Point, so hopefully that's a good sign, so.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You have a line.
Can you read that?
Alexis Hill.
Hi, um, does this, does this commission or anyone in the commission plan on working on any housing developments that would actually be affordable to our average citizens because $250,000 and up for houses right now seems extremely ridiculous when our median household income for Saline County is only $51,000.
Good point, the answer is yes, I'm not sure who in the room could give.
I can most try. We've done a housing study back in 2016, we've updated it, it identifies, it takes the income levels of the community and stratifies them and then stratifies the housing that's in the community to try to identify the different types we need at different price points and the numbers that we need. We have, in separate and distinct from this subdivision, which the developers are, you know, responding to market interest that they think is out there, we've been working with the state, with our elected officials, with other developers, trying to look at apartments and townhomes and cottage homes, using rural housing incentive districts for a couple of subdivisions. One has been approved for rural housing incentive districts, another one is just in the initial stages of that, all trying to address different price points and, you know, recognizing the need for more than just this particular product in the market. I would tell you, the lower that price point gets, the harder it is for, just to get it done at that cost and the harder it is to find a developer that wants to dabble in that market, but that's why we're trying to use, we've secured a moderate income housing grant from the state of Kansas, rural housing incentive districts, industrial revenue bond financing for property tax abatement and sales tax abatement, all trying to work with developers that are looking at different price points.
I truly could not have answered your question better, but, so the answer to your question is yes, we are, we are moving in that direction.
Okay, because currently all I'm seeing are developed, higher-end developments, when you go to look on our current market, pretty much all anyone for a family of three with an income of even $75,000 right now, even with good credit can afford, is a rundown bought as is a hundred and maybe $30,000 home. So it's pretty bad right now for our housing market, so I'm just kind of astonished that this would even be something that we would be talking about when seriously we need to be addressing the actual housing problems that we are having, not building more homes for rich individuals.
Well, as the city manager said, getting it done at the lower price requires a lot more work and he was rather modest in the work that the city staff has put in to come up with these potential developments, but it's a little slower, but it is coming.
And I guess I would add too, that it's not one at the exclusion of another. There is interest on the part of developers and buyers for the product that this represents, that is a little bit easier, I don't want to make light of the financial risk the developers having to take to put this subdivision together and these price points carry with them some risk, but that's the more solid part of our market where there's interest. What we're trying to do is develop interest in kind of the lower price points of the market, but the price point that you identified is something that our housing consultants discussed and there's not a lot of ways to build brand-new, stick-built homes at the price point that you identified. Or we're trying to look at multifamily, trying to look at apartments, renovation of hotels, redevelopment of properties, but it is much more challenging.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments online, Mr. Wood? No, all right. Any, we'll bring it back to the commission for action here.
Mayor, I move we authorize city staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for improvements to Cedar Ridge Drive for future consideration by the city commission.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for improvements to Cedar Ridge Drive for our future consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan, I think, okay, we got the, okay, motion carries 5-0, thank you. 7.3.
Item 7.3, approve ordinance number 22-11111 on first reading to amend section 42-347 of the I-1 district regulations to add truck sales and service to the list of permitted uses in the I-1 district.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think as most of the commission is aware, Superior Heating and Plumbing Company relocated their operations from Copper Court, which is located to the east of Centennial Road and east of the K-State Salina campus, and they relocated out to the former El Dorado bus plant on Wall Street. They have apparently leased their former location to Bruckner Truck Sales of Hayes, Kansas, which wants to use that as a interim location for new and used truck sales, parts and service as they look to enter the Salina market. Unfortunately, neither party did any due diligence when they entered into their lease to determine whether that was actually a permitted use of the property. And so under Kansas law, in order to get a vehicle dealer's license, you have to have the local zoning administrator sign off on your license application indicating that your proposed dealership location is allowed under the local zoning. That could not be done in this case because truck sales and service is not listed as a permitted use in the I-1 district. So we discussed that with Bruckner Truck Sales and we informed them that one thing they could do is ask to be let out of their lease and look for alternative locations or the other option they could pursue would be to apply for a zoning text amendment to the I-1 district regulations requesting that truck sales and service be added to the list of allowed uses. We put in your packet a map that shows the rather limited areas of the city that are zoned I-1 and I-1 is designed to be an industrial park district and so in most of our industrial districts, you can do just about any type of commercial use in an I-2 or an I-3, but because I-1 is intended to be an industrial park and have a higher set of development standards, it has a more restrictive list of uses, particularly commercial uses. And so this request was to add to the list of uses in the I-1 district regulations to allow truck sales in I-1. And so we analyzed the I-1 district regulations and analyzed our ordinance, we created a little spreadsheet or matrix looking at where uses were allowed. And so we looked at similar types of uses and what we found was that most of the uses that are similar, like automobile repair or boat sales or recreational vehicle sales or truck terminals, were listed as conditional uses, not permitted uses. And so the request from Bruckner Truck Sales was to add truck sales and service to the list of permitted uses, would allow it by right, and if it became a conditional use, then it would have to be approved on a location-by-location basis. So staff looked at that and notwithstanding the preferences of the Bruckner group, we looked at what made the most sense from the way our ordinance was structured and how we administer other uses and staff recommended and the city planning commission concurred that to add truck sales and service, it should be added to the list of conditional uses and not the list of permitted uses as requested by the applicant. So your options this evening would be to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the attached ordinance, which adds truck sales and service to the list of conditional uses allowed in I-1. If you took that option, that would require three affirmative votes from the city commission. If that option were approved, then we would work with Bruckner Truck Sales to come back with a conditional use permit application for the Copper Court location. Your second option would be to amend the ordinance that's before you to make truck sales and service a permitted use as requested in the application. This would require four votes from the city commission because it's contrary to the recommendation of the planning commission. If that option were approved, then truck sales, unlike boat sales or RV sales, would be permitted as of right on any I-zone, I-1 zone property in the city. You could postpone consideration of this text amendment to a future date to allow additional information to be provided by staff or the applicant, or you could decide that the status quo should remain. In that case, a motion should be made to deny approval of the ordinance and if you chose that option, then Bruckner Truck Sales would have to find a location that was zoned to allow truck sales and service. So the ordinance that's before you this evening is based on the recommendation of the planning commission and that puts truck sales and service in the category of a conditional use. We did provide some maps and just an illustration of the area there, but the primary purpose and origin of the I-1 district was to take the area that's across the street from the K-State Salina campus and have a higher set of development standards and a more restrictive list of industrial and commercial uses than our other industrial districts. And there's also some I-1 zoning in place to try to protect the approaches to the Salina Regional Airport Terminal. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that the commission might have.
Commissioner Longbahn?
No questions.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Only question I have, and I'm looking at this map, I'm pretty sure I already know the answer, but surrounding area looks like auto. the answer, but surrounding area looks like auto body and storage, et cetera.
Yeah, just the Harbin Construction Building and this, this building that was housed the Superior Heating and Plumbing was built just prior to the current zoning ordinance being in place and was originally buildings that were built by Harbin Construction and then sold to Superior. But the mini storage across the street, there's a welding shop at the end, there's a cellular tower. All of those were done through conditional use permits. And the only other uses on Copper Court, including this one, were built prior to the nineteen-seventy-seven ordinance being in effect. So it is, it is a mix of uses, but the idea was creating an industrial park classification for the property that sits opposite the college campus.
Commissioner Hoppe?
As far as timeframe, as far as getting the conditional use permit approved for them, we can do that fairly quickly?
I have calendared it out for the Bruckner group. If you were to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission, then we would have that before the planning commission on June the seventh, and we've shared that date with the Bruckner group.
Has to go again before the planning commission?
The conditional use permit. Once you create the opportunity for that to be applied for, then they would file an application for that specific location, and then that would go before the planning commission on June the seventh. But they can't apply for it unless it's created as a, as a use that they can apply for.
What's the timeframe if we approve the permitted use?
If you made it a permitted use, then they would have second reading next Monday and upon publication of the text amendment, then that would make that location an eligible location upon publication of the text amendment, which would be a week, something on the order of May sixth, something like that. So it's about a one-month difference as far as the timeframe. And I think both staff and the planning commission were aware of the timeframe, but they were just looking at it from the big picture of zoning, administering the zoning ordinance, and they looked at boat sales and RV sales in it, that being conditional from the structure of the ordinance and other similar uses, that's why we made that recommendation, notwithstanding the Bruckners' sense of urgency.
I don't have any questions.
All right. Just have two questions. Was any, excuse me, any intention to erect any buildings that might not conform to the ?
No, I think they're planning, they've indicated to me that they're, they're trying to ease into the Salina market and their, their goal long-term is to be closer with a property that has some interstate exposure. But this was, I guess I'd call it an interim location till they found something closer to an interstate. And so they were looking at it from that standpoint, just to try to establish themselves in the Salina market and see if they wanted to invest permanently here. So this is kind of an interim location, so they're not planning to build anything or make any investments on this site.
Okay, and you alluded to my next question a little bit, but is there any, are there any other special considerations with the university district across the street that would influence the type of conditional uses? The school sits far back from the.
What we pointed out was that there, admittedly, this, these locations on Copper Court are tucked farther back, but the idea behind using the conditional use permit process is if you had something that had direct frontage on Centennial Road, the commission may want to look at that differently than they would if it was tucked farther back. And so what the conditional use permit does is it just looks at the use in the plan on a case-by-case basis. And while it's not, it's not perfect by any means, there, that was the process that was used for the parking lot that provides storage for auto, Ford's Auto Repair. And it's, it's got some landscaping and buffering and some other features that you wouldn't ordinarily have, but the reason for that was because it was across the street from the campus. So by doing it through a conditional use permit, you can have conditions and things that apply to specific projects on a location-by-location basis.
And that answered my concerns. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public?
I mean, this property fits in perfectly with what that area is. In fact, the PDD just to the south is zoned I-1, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Just seems like a long time to get a conditional use permit and get them in there, just.
Well, as the Ace tell us in school, failure to plan does not constitute an emergency on our part. But, but point taken. Any comments, questions, concerns from the public? I don't see any online. All right, bring it back to the commission for action.
I move that this commission concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance number twenty-two dash eleven thousand one hundred and eleven, adding to the list of conditions uses allowed in the I-1 district.
Second. Thank you. It moved and seconded to approve ordinance twenty-two dash one-one-one-one-one on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries five zero. And we may move to seven point four.
Item seven point four, approve ordinance number two-two dash one-one, one-one-one-one-zero on first reading to amend ordinance number ninety-six dash nine-seven-three-eight, which established the development standards and limitations in the Cedar Creek Manufactured Home Park.
All right. Well, acknowledge that you received a very thick packet on this item, but you were not singled out because the planning commission's packet was even thicker than what you got. So we pulled a few items out based on their direction. But within, within that lengthy packet and behind the staff report, there's, there's an attachment that has a cover sheet on it that says important terms and definitions. And what we found with the planning commission, and they indicated that was extremely helpful to them, if you don't understand the different terms and conditions for the different types of, and styles of housing, this might not make, it's not going to make a lot of sense to you in terms of differentiationing these things. But I couldn't help but notice that there was a article in the Salina Journal on the front page, and it was talking about manufactured housing. And in one of the, one of the categories or the headings for the photo that was there, it indicated that manufactured homes and mobile homes could help meet some of the housing needs in Salina. And that caught my attention and pointed to the importance of the terms and definitions because mobile homes are not part of the housing mix for the city of Salina because mobile homes are prohibited in the city of Salina. And if you wanted to bring a mobile home into the city, you would not be allowed to. And a mobile home has a specific definition because it is a, a structure that is factory-built and it's on a chassis and transportable, but it has not been constructed to any identifiable code. And most, most of the problems that have happened with fires and other things in the city of Salina have to do with mobile homes because they tend to have aluminum wiring and have some other things. So since nineteen ninety-two, mobile homes have not, the ones that are here are grandfathered, but you can't bring a new mobile home in. And so we have mobile homes identified in the ordinance, but mobile homes that we have are all grandfathered, and the goal is to gradually eliminate them over time. On the other hand, a manufactured home is a home that is built, factory-built, but it has a HUD code seal on it, and it's been inspected and found to meet the standards of the Federal Manufacturing Home Construction and Safety Standards Act, generally known as the HUD code. So on a HUD code home, there's a little medallion that's put on the home that shows it meets the HUD code, it's been inspected, and you have to be able to show that medallion to place a home in the, in the city of Salina. And so a manufactured home can be either a single-wide home or it can be a double-wide home, but it's generally placed on piers and it's not on a permanent foundation and potentially it's transportable. But national studies have shown that about ninety percent of manufactured homes that are set never move. Even though they're designed to be transportable, they tend not to be moved once they're placed. And then we have a definition of a manufactured home park, and we have something on the order of twelve or thirteen manufactured home parks within the city. Some, if not most of those, date back to the time when the Air Force, the Smoky Hill Shilling Air Force Base was open in operation and the parks sprung up to provide a housing option for service people that were serving at the base. And that's why you see a good number of them are on the western side of the city because they're close to the, the Air Force Base. Then we have a definition of a manufactured home subdivision. And in a manufactured home subdivision, these are factory-built homes, but they are placed on a permanent foundation and the home and the property are owned by the same lot owner. So in many cases, in a manufactured home park, the manufactured homes are owned by the park owner and they're leased by a tenant. In the case of a manufactured home subdivision, usually the owner owns the manufactured home, and then they're also going to own the lot that it's placed on and it's placed on a permanent foundation. I've covered mobile home, and then we have some, couple other terms just to be familiar with. A modular home is also a home that's built in a factory, and it's a factory-built home, but it's designed not to meet the HUD code, but it's designed to meet the city's building code. And it's generally placed on a permanent foundation. Then we have motor homes, which are not designed for long-term living. And then we have what we call a residential design manufactured home. And the difference between a manufactured home and a residential design manufactured home is a manufactured home, the only place you can put a manufactured home is inside a manufactured home park, which we have twelve to thirteen of those. On a residential design manufactured home, you can build those on any vacant lot as long as there's no covenants or anything in place that might prohibit that. So there's a relatively new home. It's at the northwest corner of College Avenue and South Street as you're going towards Ace Hardware. And there was a home there that burned down, and that home was replaced with a residential design manufactured home. And I think most people that drive by that property probably don't even know that that's a manufactured home because it has the similar dimensions as a stick-built home. It has a porch, it has a garage, and it blends in. But the idea behind a residential design manufactured home is to allow an option on individual, single-family lots to have a residential design manufactured home that has to be double-wide, it has to have pitched roof, and siding has to meet certain criteria. But if you meet that criteria, then you can go on any residential lot, including outside the park. So what we're discussing here is the Cedar Creek Manufactured Home Park. And just by way of a background, in nineteen ninety-one, the city planning commission and city commission adopted a new section of the zoning ordinance that provided zoning ordinance requirements for manufactured home parks and subdivisions. And Cedar Creek was the first and the only park to be developed under those new regulations. So in nineteen ninety-six, John Melvin, who had Melvin Homes, was up on North Knight Street, and his father, Lyle Melvin, had developed the Prairie Village Manufactured Home Park. And he came forward with a vision to develop a new manufactured home park along the west side of I-135 and south of Country Oak Estates. And so that was, went through the review process in nineteen ninety-six, and his plan was to develop a modern land lease manufactured home community. The thing that made it a little bit different is that with a hundred and fifty-five home sites and the way it laid them out, the density was only four-point-two units an acre, which is pretty comparable to a standard residential subdivision, which a manufactured home park, you can have up to nine-point-seven units per acre is in the way of density. So he proposed a community center, a storm shelter, walking pass, common recreation area. The plan was that the park owner would retain ownership and maintenance responsibility for all the infrastructure in the park. And so there was a preliminary plan that was done. There was even some, some negotiating about parkland that existed, and some of the park land was deemed surplus by the city commission and incorporated into the park. And so on the final plan, there were a hundred and fifty-five home sites, and twenty of those were along Marcella Drive. Actually, that was reduced to ten eventually on the west side. But the final park area was thirty-seven acres, there was a hundred and fifty-five units, and there was a storm shelter community center built as part of Phase One, and the streets were constructed, were paved, and they're twenty-seven feet back a curb to back a curb. So there was a park plan that was approved by the planning commission. The city commission approved an ordinance ninety-six, nine-seven, thirty-eight that set out the development standards for the Cedar Creek Manufactured Home Park. There was a final plat. There was actually a special assessment benefit district that was created for streets and water and sewer, just like any other subdivision. And Mr. Melvin started by developing Phase One, which is the area, forty-seven lots to the north of the community center. And then Mr. Melvin sold the park to Affordable Residential Communities of Denver in nineteen ninety-nine. And so Cedar Creek was the first park that was developed under the new park standards, and it's the only park that had an approved park plan. And it was kind of designed to set a bar for new manufactured home development in the city. And so the biggest thing that changed was the original vision was to have predominantly double-wide units. So if you've driven the area or tried to drive down to the area, you drove through an area called Country Oak Estates, which is between Shilling Road and this subdivision, you probably didn't notice that most of the homes in Country Oak Estates are manufactured homes, but they're modular homes. And so many of them were built to meet the building code, and many of them were residential design. And the reason for that is that most lenders won't give conventional real estate financing unless you put the home on a permanent foundation. So the original vision was to do many more double wides similar to Country Oak Estates and not so many single wides. So after ARC bought the property, they were primarily the developers of Phase Two. So things were developing in Phase Two under AR- So, things were developing in Phase Two under ARC and under Saddlebrook back ownership until 2019, when I received an application to put a single wide unit on Marcella Drive. And I said, "No, you can't put single wide units on Marcella Drive. Why would you think so?" And the answer I got was because there's already 12 or 13 of them there. And I said, "How could they possibly be there? They're not allowed." But nonetheless, they are there. And the same thing has occurred gradually through most of Phase Two, where single wide units were placed on lots in lieu of double-wide units. So, this request has been filed by the new Cedar Creek Owners Vineyards Management Group. They also purchased the Prairie Village on West Republic and West Cloud Commons on West Cloud Street. And their goal has been to fill every vacant space and to replace older units with newer units. And so, there's no special dimensional requirements or double-wide, single-wide distinctions in those parks. But Cedar Creek, due to the 1996 conditions of approval, have standards that don't apply elsewhere in the city. And they view those as obstacles to their full build-out of the park. And their concern is that these restrictions were not uniformly enforced against previous owners. And they're requesting that they not be enforced against them. So, the specific things that they are requesting that were part of the 1996 approval was to eliminate the minimum length and width dimensions on single-wide and double-wide units, which have not been widely adhered to. They're requesting a change essentially to eliminate the original ratio of 30 single-wide and 125 double-wide units on the park plan. I've estimated that there's only about five double-wide units total in Phase Two. The other thing I observed is that there were a number of double-wide units placed in Phase One that have been relocated out of the park. And so, the original vision was 80% double-wide units, 20% single-wide units. And so, currently, the double wides make up much less than 20% of the total park. The other thing, again, then this was volunteered by Mr. Melvin because that's what he said he wanted for his park and his park residents. And so, in Phase One, the city enforced a requirement that every manufactured home that was placed there have a carport. And Mr. Melvin had some specifications for those carports. And that requirement was widely ignored in Phase Two. And it was not strictly enforced by the city. So, we're basically at a point here where both the historical development and Vineyard Management's vision for Cedar Creek does not align with Mr. Melvin's original vision. And they think these restrictions inhibit their ability to fully develop the park. So, the Planning Commission conducted a hearing on this. There was, it's a public hearing, but there was no means available to individually identify and notify park residents. So, there was not individualized notice of that hearing of the proposed changes to existing park residents. At that hearing, representatives of Vineyards Management Group spoke. There was numerous comments and questions by Planning Commissioner members. And then they made a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation, to essentially repeal the three requirements related to unit dimensions and carports as requested by the new owners. And so, there would be no fiscal impact to the city as a result of this action. And so, your options would be to concur with that recommendation and adopt the attached ordinance, which repeals those three requirements as requested by the applicant. You could amend the ordinance that's before you and retain the requirement that all homes have carports, if you think that is important. You could postpone consideration of this text amendment to a future date to allow additional information to be provided by staff or the applicant. Or you could maintain the status quo and decide that the requirements set out in the original ordinance should be retained, in which case, a motion should be made to deny approval of the ordinance. So, as we've looked back over the intervening 25 years, the development that has occurred has deviated so significantly from the original concept for this manufactured home community that planning staff does not think it's practical to go back to that original John Melvin concept. It's clear that Vineyards Management has a different vision for Cedar Creek than Mr. Melvin did. And these requirements are really internal matters for the park as far as the aesthetics, the character of the park, and primarily affect park residents and by extension, the owners of the park. On the other hand, the single-wide units on Marcella should never have been placed there. They do affect the character and appearance of a public street. And so, the idea was that Marcella, being a collector's street, is someday going to be extended down to Waterwell Road and Connect Schilling Road. And Waterwell, and the goal of the Planning Commission and City Commission were that it would look like it does to the north in Country Oak Estates. And so, that there would not be single-wide units there. And so, staff looks at that area a little differently. So, as far as the main action, we would recommend Alternative One or Alternative Two. We think that the units on Marcella Drive are best addressed through a compliance agreement. And so, in your action that you would be taking today, they would not impact or change the prohibition on single-wide units being placed on Marcella. And so, as it relates to the units on Marcella, you could direct staff to initiate enforcement action to have those units removed from those lots. You could direct staff to enter into a compliance agreement with Vineyards Management. And that would allow for those to gradually be removed and replaced by double-wide units over time. Or you could direct staff to initiate a text amendment that would go back and amend the ordinance to eliminate that prohibition against placing single-wide units on Marcella Drive. But I'm embarrassed to sit here and tell you that in my long service working for the city, that I had no idea that there were single-wide units being placed on Marcella Drive. And I'm embarrassed to say that.
Well, probably not as embarrassed as I'll be asking this question. Could you explain 30 seconds or less the argument for or against double-wide versus single-wide?
Thank you. Yeah, the idea, and again, I will refer you just to look. The idea is that when I use the term residential design manufactured home, I could drive you around to different locations, some in North Salina, some on Saturn, some the one at College and South Street. You can make double-wide units, so they're almost indistinguishable from single-family dwellings. And so, the, for whatever reason, Mr. Melvin had a vision that there was a market for people. Obviously, a double-wide home has much more square footage, usually more bedrooms, and usually more stability and length of tenure of residents if it's a double-wide. So, when we say that the double-wide versus single-wide, it just goes to the internal character of the park and its appearance. Obviously, double wides are, have more square footage and larger living areas. They're less available and, in some cases, less affordable because of the extra cost and the square footage. And so, both from a production standpoint and a market demand standpoint, Vineyards Management sees more of a need and more of a demand for the single wides versus the double wides. But as it relates to Marcella, the idea in our manufactured home park code doesn't allow single-wide manufactured homes on public streets. And the reason is to make those internal to the park and then have regular units on the exterior on the public streets. So, as it relates to the interior of the park, it's just a matter of preference for the market that the developer is trying to appeal to. And for whatever reason, Mr. Melvin wanted to put the emphasis on that. And quite honestly, the, there had been other proposals that had been denied previously in that there's some people that have the perception that everything along I-135 in Salina is a manufactured home park. And they didn't want more of the same. So, you know, this is different. It's got larger lots, it's got better paved streets, it's got more open space. It has a landscape buffer along I-135. Those are all things that were put in that were different than before. And his vision was that double wides would provide more stability and more longer tenure. But double wides are more expensive. There's a more limited pool of residents that would desire to have a double wide. And that's proved out over time.
I don't know if this is helpful, but over my career, I've observed people, developers come before to the Planning Commission or the City Commission for that matter, and share a vision that's compelling. And it may be part of their, you know, their sales pitch for approval. And sometimes that all gets reduced to writing. The Planning Commission and the City Commission wishes to take them up on that vision and codify that vision. And I think this is an example of where that may have happened. But it was, it's a one-off that was codified, but it's out of sync with the rest of our standards. And so, it requires staff on an ongoing basis to recall that this is the normal expectation. But we have one particular approval that had conditions attached to it. And it's easy to lose track of those. So, and that's speculation on my part in terms of the history. But then you also have to think about that going forward, that you don't compound it by continuing to try to impose conditions that are kind of out of sync with the remainder of the standards that are typically in place.
And that's why there's had a multi-page ordinance and numerous conditions and things attached that basically the commissions looked at staff and said, "So, Mr. Melvin's making these promises and commitments. How do we carry those out?" By making them conditions in the ordinance and incorporating them into that to turn promises into conditions. And so, that's what was done. But Mr. Melvin did not stay with the project long enough to turn all those promises into reality.
In our, in your opinion, is there, or are our current regulations up to date? I mean, just across similar communities?
I had the experience, it was, I think, done in 2012. But we had a study session and we rented a bus. And we put the City Commission on a bus. And we drove through every manufactured home park in Salina. And there's, I mean, Vineyards has indicated that. The City Commission observed that in 2012. Cedar Creek is by far, has the highest development standards of any manufactured home community we have in Salina. And a lot of that has to do with the quality of the streets, the fact that it has real public water lines instead of spaghetti lines like a lot of our older parks. So, it has good fire protection, it has good streets, it has lots of open space, it has lower density. All of those characteristics are still going to be there, whether you have single-wide units or double-wide units. And so, that's what we told the Planning Commission and that's what they agreed with, that the things that make Cedar Creek unique from the other parks in Salina are still present even if you have single wides instead of double wides.
I have one other question, but I'll save it and I'll let the other commissioners go first. Commissioner Ryan?
Oh, I don't have any questions to ask. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hoppe?
Question, I drove through there yesterday. And I noticed there's, in our packet, we show a single wide that's 66 feet long, I believe. But it appeared there were some other units ready to, and I guess they're sitting there maybe waiting for our approval. And they were wider, but they weren't as long. And I don't see a picture of those in here. Is there somebody that could address that?
There were a number of units that were delivered to the site, but not allowed to be set by staff.
So, yes, we have three different styles.
Can you identify yourself?
Sorry, I'm Edith Kessler and I'm with Vineyards Management. We do have three particular homes in Cedar Creek right now. There's some 16 by 60s, which are the smallest. The biggest reason that we're trying to take down the minimum size requirements in the current ordinance. And then we have 16 by 66. And then we also have 28 by 44, which is another reason that we wanted to reduce the minimum size requirement. Because the minimum size required in the ordinance says 28 by 48s. And those double wides, which was John Melvin's vision that we brought in, are smaller. And the reason that the size stuff happened the way that it did is we took the homes that we could get the fastest. And so, in the mobile home, or in the modular home industry right now, you're looking at a year's wait time. So, you place an order and you're looking at a year out before you even start getting your homes. We placed these orders in October. And we started getting homes in January. So, we did it based on what we could get. And obviously, I'm speaking to the choir here, there is a huge housing need in Salina. And like Alexis Hill, I think was her name, it needs to be affordable housing. Median income's $51,000. And this fits that mold. And we're planning on filling everything that we have.
Will these properties be placed on a foundation or will they be on pillars?
So, the ones on Marcella, because there are still three homes on Marcella. If you drove out there, there's three new double wides. We are going to, at some point, we're working with the city to try to come up with a solution to that for those three. The ones on the inside of the community will not be. That's not a requirement of the ordinance. So, we will not, we will not do that on the inside of the community.
They're just placed on piers.
Yeah, they will be placed on piers, yes.
I thought pillars, piers, yeah. The carports, when I was out there, I noticed there's a large number that do not have carports.
Right.
If you read through the ordinance, I believe, it said the carports were supposed to be a certain size. So, cars, again, a lot of them, it looked like the stairs were in the front part of the carport. So, cars couldn't even really get in there. So, to me, they were almost created a eyesore to a certain extent.
Well, and that was discussed at the last meeting too, that some people, eyesore, like you said, it becomes a storage area. It becomes whatever not used for the vehicles. And the ones that he specified were attached, I don't want to say attached to the home because they're not supposed to be, but they are. And they only go to the end of the home. So, your car has to be right next to the home. And the driveway's not that much larger. So, to be honest, it's.
And the units I saw there, you know, were nice looking.
They're all brand-new. We're not bringing in anything that's.
They appeared to actually enhance the properties. And the place, the whole area out there seemed fairly clean. So, better than the other mobile home parks in town, so.
We try.
The driveway still exists even without the carports. So, the parking is off-street.
Yeah. And most of the ones out in Cedar Creek have a long, one-long driveway. And then an additional spot to the left, down at the street, if that makes sense. So, when you're getting, and you're getting like, there's enough parking space. If the carport's not there in some cases, there's enough parking spaces for three cars off-street with some of the carports that eliminates one of those spots. And so, then you would only have room for two because it becomes a deck cover or a porch cover or an enclosed porch if they've done whatever they've done for that purpose.
If I was to move there, I would, I would want the carport. So, by amending this, is there anything says a person couldn't put one in?
Right. No, it's absolutely, we will allow them. If they want to do a carport, they can put a carport on. They can add it at any time. They just have to go through the city requirements to do that, to get a permit or whatever's required in order to do that. do that, to get a permit or whatever's required in order to do that. We have no problem with it.
This would just eliminate it, making it mandatory for every unit and make it a choice. But it wouldn't prohibit carports, it just makes it a choi, volunteer choice instead of a mandate that each home has to have a carport as part of its placement.
These, these units you're putting in, you will own and, and then rent?
We will, however, because this is a new acquisition to Vineyards, our goal honestly is to be able to sell. So we're working with the state and getting our dealer's license and we actually have finalized that, so they'll be at my office Wednesday in order to, to try to finalize that process. So we will start selling homes, which, like Alexis talked about, none of these homes would be over $100,000.
That's, that was my next question.
None of them would be over $100,000.
Okay, and then they have lot rent on top of that?
They would pay the lot rent and they would own the home.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The advantage of that is that they're building equity more so than being able to trans, or move it, however, get moved later.
Well, so most of the time in a mobile home community, there's a supplement, if you're purchasing the home, there's a supplemental agreement that you would sign that says you leave it in, on the property for at least four years after or five years after payoff or after purchase. So it would have to be there long-term, but they would still own their home and be able to do with it what they wanted to. And then of course, at payoff, they would be able to pull it out and do whatever they wanted to do after that supplemental agreement was over.
Because, because when you set those, you take out the.
Yeah, we take the tire, that, all the axles and tires.
Everything come out, so you don't, so if somebody was going to move it, they'd have to bring back in the axles, reattach it and everything.
Yes.
And we require the axles and the tongue and everything to be removed when it's placed.
Yes.
But they could also, at that, at the end, decide to sell it?
Yeah, they can sell it, yeah, and we, we have current people that are out there now that do the same, do the exact same thing.
Do we require skirting around those, is that a requirement?
Managed.
I noticed there was some skirting off, of course, we only had 60 mile an hour winds last weekend, I don't know why.
Well, and we've been hit for months now with these winds, so we are actually replacing a lot of those that we own with steel skirting.
Okay.
So the vinyl skirting is obviously just not as sturdy, so all of the brand-new homes will have steel skirting on them. And then any that we, because we also have contractors out there repairing some of the storm damage and replacing those.
Who's responsible for making sure, who's responsible for making sure the skirting is on there? Is that up to you or the city?
Us. Well, as, as far as we are concerned, it's, we take that, we want it to look nice, we want it to look decent, so we take that on ourselves. Obviously, if we don't own the homes, because there's multiple homes in there that are, are homeowners.
Right.
Then they would be responsible and we would try to hold them to accountability. But the company also offers programs if we needed to, to help, to help people with that.
Because that definitely helps with the, the look and also safety of things and people getting into their home.
Yeah, skirting is a local code requirement, so if skirting comes off, we would expect it to go, be replaced.
Just one more question to add to my education today. If a person owns the home, say they've owned it for 20 years, that whole 20 years though, they are.
Paying lot rent.
But they're still leasing the ground.
Mm-hmm.
That it's, so they will never own the.
Right.
Okay.
And just, if you're, manufactured homes in Kansas are considered to be personal property, not real property, so they're, they're taxed like vehicles or they're taxed as personal property, they're not, they're not considered real estate.
Okay, it should be lower.
Should be.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any?
I have a.
I'm sorry.
Couple.
Got to come down this, sorry bud.
The subject homes on Marcella, are those owners or homeowners or tenants?
Both.
Okay.
Both. Are you talking about all of the homes that are there or just the ones that are in question?
Those that are identified that shouldn't have been placed there.
All, they're, they're both, homeowners and ours.
Okay, and I read in the packet here about storm shelter capacity, it, you know, sounds like you're really going to ramp up.
We have two storm shelters out there actually, there's one under the current office and then there's a building at the back of Ring Net Crossing that is a second storm shelter as well. So there are two storm shelters within that community.
Okay, is that something Fire and Marshall would?
We're, it's something that Building Services and Fire and Planning, we're going to work with Vineyards just to confirm what those occupancies are, which probably require us to make a site visit, but we've, we've done some calculations and the, the two shelters between them were, were designed and intended to accommodate full build-out, but we just need to confirm some square footages. There's a requirement that there'd be 18 square feet of shelter area per manufactured home unit and we just want to confirm some of those things.
Okay, well, I think this is just another piece to address the housing issue here, so.
Anything else, any other questions?
Just for the commission's benefit, to, to date since the first of the year, city staff has issued 86 permits for the placement of new manufactured homes. And that would be, that would include the southwestern manufactured home park that's owned by the Nordbo family, but it's primarily in West Cloud Commons and Prairie Village. And then some of you may or may not know that the Delray Estates on North 13th Street was bulldozed and completely cleaned off and then replaced by a brand-new manufactured home park. And so there's 24 units in phase one of that park that are all brand-new, 2021 manufactured home units that have been placed there.
Have they started occupying that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any action to be taken by the commission?
I have a question. Do we have two actions to take here then?
Yeah, one is, one is relating to the ordinance that's in front of you and then the, the second one is really to just give staff some guidance as to what, what your preferences are. As we noted, staff, staff couldn't recommend and didn't recommend rolling the, the lots on Marcella and treating them the same as those interior to the park. So your first action relates to the ordinance that's drafted and that ordinance basically repeals or eliminates the dimensional requirements, the single wide, double wide ratio and the requirement for carports. So that addresses those. And then as it relates to the, the single wide units on Marcella, we've identified that you could initiate enforcement action or direct us to initiate enforcement action to do something with those immediately. You could direct staff to enter into a compliance agreement with the owners to gradually get those replaced over time. Or you could direct staff to, to do a text amendment that would allow, somehow allow the single wides on Marcella. We were recommending option two, we think that's the most workable is to work to gradually over time, convert those from single wide to the originally intended double wide because they're on the exterior of the park. But the first action on page four there deals with the ordinance that's attached that would repeal those three requirements that the units that are sitting out there don't line up with.
Well, I'm going to make a motion here on the ordinance and then we might want to discuss a little bit on the Marcella, but Mayor Davis, I move that we concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance number 22-11110, which repeals the three requirements as requested by the applicant.
I'll second that.
Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 22-11110 on first reading to amend ordinance number 96-9738, which established the development standards and limitations in the Cedar Creek manufactured home park. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None, that motion carries five to zero.
My, my question on the next one is, we talk about going to, you know, getting rid of the single wides and I know clear to the south end there, those single wides run east-west. So if you're putting a double wide in there, would they, I mean, I'm guessing the intention was for those to run north-south or were they always to be run east-west as double wides?
Well, the, the, for the double wides, they're, they're going to have the deeper, deeper dimension running east and west and so if, if you had something that was 28 by 44 or 24 by 48 or something like that, you'd have the 24-foot dimension that would be facing the street and it would run longer that direction. The lots to the far north were designed to be extra wide so that the homes that faced them look like standard subdivision.
Because the, the, on the west side of Marcella, are those manufactured, are those?
They're all manufactured, they're all exactly the same.
They all run east, they all run north-south, so they, they look more like homes, so that's why I.
Yeah, the lot, the lots were platted to be wider for that orientation, the ones farther south were not platted that same way.
But on the west side of the street, what you're saying, the west side of the street, all those aren't going to face and stay going to face.
Right.
The road. The east side of the street will not. So regardless of whether, in my opinion, regardless of whether they're a single wide or a double wide, you're not going to see the front door.
That's.
On Marcella, the front door is always going to be on the driveway side, so there's not going to be any difference. And in my opinion, people want yards. They'd rather have a yard. If you're putting a double wide and stipulating that a double wide has to be on there, you're taking up their yard space. You're buying into that, you know, that nine, that nine homes for square foot versus the four.
That's why I was asking, because I understand on the west side, they're made to look like homes. On the east side, if they're going to continue to run north-south, whether they're single or double wide.
Doesn't matter.
You get the same, you get the same view to me, so.
So for simple math, which option are you proposing?
If they were to run north-south and look like a home, I'd be for option two, but I'm not sure that.
You can't, the.
I know, I, yeah, because of the, you tell, yeah, I understand that, but so it's not set out to look like it sounds to me.
The way, the way to do that, you would have to basically combine lots.
Lots.
Yes.
Yes.
To do that, you would, you would combine the lots so that you had, you would have double wide lots so that you could have the double wide units face the front doors towards the street.
And that's a whole, that's a whole different subject.
And, and that would require those two lots become available at the same time.
One point I was, a question I was going to raise is if you take the phased-in approach that gradually over time we're going to transition, given the units and the lifespan of the units, is anyone spec, willing to speculate about the timeline for that?
It could be years. I have people that have been on that street since the homes were put in. So that was 20 years ago, 20 plus. And I have others that have been there four or five, but our turnover really isn't that high. People come out and they stay out there. And just because the person leaves, does that mean we have to take the home out? Because those are, there's a, there's a division, like some of them are owned by the company and some of them are owned by, you know, residents. And sometimes the residents don't pull their home out, they leave the home there. So they may sell it to somebody, we've had multiple sold to, you know, individuals within the city that have come and purchased them and they still sit there. So there is not a home in there, honestly, that's been pulled out on Marcella since I've been there and I've been there for 11 years.
And I, and I.
I guess I, I'd just like to opine in that I think Vineyard knows their business in the modern era away from when these texts were created, so I guess I'd opt in that we give them the text amendment and we just look to change those.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to add that if we start messing around with our lot size, we're going to affect our cash flow. That was probably projected when they bought it and I think the cat is out of the proverbial bag and maybe we shouldn't try to put it back in.
I would just point out that in the northwest corner, there's five lots laid out there and there's three homes on those five lots because in order to get the homes oriented that direction, even though there were five lots there, there's three homes because the lots had to be combined to get the double wides to fit there. So it's not, it's not without precedent.
All right, then, is there a motion to direct staff to follow one, two, or three?
Mayor, I motion, make a motion, the city commission, direct staff to initiate a text amendment to the ordinance rezoning Cedar Creek that would eliminate the prohibition against placing single wide units on Marcella Drive.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt option or recommendation number three to direct staff to initiate a text amendment to the ordinance rezoning Cedar Creek that would eliminate the prohibition against placing single wide units on Marcella Drive. Any further discussion?
I would just want to point out that it would have to go beyond that because we have a citywide code that prohibits the placement of single wides on a public street. So you'd have to, you'd not only have to apply this as it relates to Cedar Creek, but then you'd have to have a citywide text amendment because presently, single wide units are not allowed to be placed on a public street.
Can that be done to?
It just means that.
Just one site or does it have to be a citywide change?
What a, well, if you amend it in Cedar Creek, you still have a citywide prohibition on placing single wide, so you're, you're having to amend two different ordinances to get to that result.
Aren't all the other parks grandfathered in though?
The other, the other parks, for instance, over there behind West Crawford, those are, are grandfathered in, they were done prior to 1991, but the.
What about the one like on Republic? Is there?
The, the ones on West Cloud, those, those are grandfathered in, but the, the intent was that all single wide units would be oriented to and accessed from the internal park streets and not, not from external public streets. So that would require two, two amendments, one it relates to Cedar Creek and the other relates citywide.
Citywide would be in the event that another park was established.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
So commissioners, I think we understand your, your intent. Let us see if we can put our heads together outside of the meeting.
Yeah, my, because my question is, I guess I'd look at the applicant, for those single wides that sit on Marcella, as they became vacant, again, you don't own them all, but so I guess as they became vacant or were to be removed because of age, putting a double wide in there wouldn't be the worst thing?
No, it wouldn't necessarily be the worst thing, but if we're going to be required to pull that home out.
But I don't think, I think the way this reads is, is gradual removal, to me, that's kind of vague.
It could be literally 30, I mean, it could be 30, 40, 50 years.
It just means that if a single wide is removed, then only one that complies goes back in its place.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be replaced then, it obviously can't be replaced until the adjacent lot is available, so it, it could be.
Well, no, because you can still put a double wide on any of those.
Yeah, it can still run.
Yeah, and it wasn't required in the original that it had to run front door to the street. So even in the original zoning, it would go in the same position that it is currently in.
And just cover more of the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the compliance agreement could be specifically vague enough to give you.
The other, the other distinction is that all the homes on Marcella, the, the choices were residential design, manufactured home, a modular home, or a site-built or stick-built home. All three of those have to be on a permanent foundation and none of those single wides are on a permanent foundation.
Neither are the doubles.
You'd be looking to take the single wides out and if, as they were replaced over time, you would have homes that would be on a permanent foundation.
We can staff this through outside this meeting.
We don't have to do anything today, do we?
No.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's put that.
Okay, now we do have a motion on the floor, so we'll either have to withdraw the motion or we have to do something with it. If you want to go home.
I, I think we understand the intent of that motion, if you recognize that we're going to have to sort through some of the issues that Mr. Andrew raised in response to the direction you're giving us. We, what I anticipate is we'll probably end up coming back with more information about inventory of our situation throughout the community, this, what you're recommending with the text amendment.
I would rather not pass this and get our ducks in a row.
Okay.
I agree.
So.
You could soften that to have staff report back options as it.
So could we, is it?
I just need, remove the motion.
I withdraw the second.
All right, thank you. And. Thank you, and staff has heard enough discussion to.
We will report back on options specific to this question.
Yeah, I think we created the problem. We need to figure about how we can correct it without.
All right.
Creating a new one somewhere else.
Does, want to just keep going, anybody need a break?
All we have is.
You good?
I'm good.
All right, we have other business. Any other business? I, I have one issue, but I'll let the other commissioners go first. And I have it here somewhere, but I was just curious, are there, what's the criteria for deciding if a motorized bike requires a license, like a motorcycle or a motor scooter? And the reason I ask, there are some motorized bikes that I know are going faster than 15 miles an hour, don't have lights, don't have taillights, they go through red lights as if they're a kid running across the street, and, you know, they're not licensed, but, but they're a great risk for being involved in a bad accident.
I don't know that we know the answer off the top of my head, but the reason I chuckled is I know the deputy city manager's been dealing with some very specific electric vehicle questions in the version lately.
There's, there's specific requirements about, in the standard traffic ordinance that we have adopted that, that defines what a bicycle is or what an electric bicycle is, and it's, it has to do with the size of the motor. It's not a speed thing, so there's, there's not a speed requirement or a capabilities requirement, it's about the size of the motor on the, on the bicycle. And then there are different requirements on that bicycle in regards to what kind of standard equipment it would have to have, turn signals, that sort of thing, and I don't, I don't, I don't think that there are requirements for, additional requirements on a, just a motorized bicycle or electric bicycle above and beyond any normal bicycle. Now, once you get to a bigger engine, like 125cc or bigger than 50cc, it becomes a motorcycle, and there are requirements, so it's, it really depends on how big the engine is or the capabilities of the electric bike.
Because these are achieving speeds that a motor scooter or motorcycle, if they were driving slow, would, would travel, so they're, they're in with traffic but not acting as if they have to obey the rules.
Yeah, I think you're raising two issues. One is the traffic, obeying the traffic rules, which would apply. The, the things that Mr. Wood is describing, we're trying to stay in sync with the state statute as they regulate different types of vehicles, so I don't want to deviate a whole lot there.
Ironically, we've found that many communities that are dealing with ordinances for electric scooters are dealing with electric bikes at the same time in the same ordinance, so they're not, they're not identical, but what we've seen is that many communities, when they decide that they need ordinances relating to electric scooters, also establish rules and regulations for electric bikes and define them.
All right.
But those electric bicycles should follow the same rules that a bicycle should follow, which is the same traffic rules that everybody has to follow, so they would, you know, they'd be subject to ticket if they were, if they were caught, you know, buzzing across an intersection or whatever.
Okay, and I know that the Chamber of Commerce will soon, or it's probably already started its new branding effort, at least for online interaction with cities, and we talked about branding for, for the city from our perspective, and if the chamber's coming out with its own program, just wondered if this would be a good time for us to co-brand together, or?
Yes, we'll stay in communication with them, but they, they, they announced kind of their vision at the Chamber Annual Banquet, and we'll stay in contact with them in terms of their timeline and how they plan to progress with that.
All right, any other, other business? Commissioner Ryan?
I'm okay.
We will now move to citizens forum, where anyone can approach the podium and use your three minutes for questions, comments, concerns.
On those electric bikes, you need to restrict them to certain areas, because if you're going to allow them in areas where there are big semi, or concrete trucks moving, that'll be just a little bump when we run over them. That's happened before, so you might want to look at that. Back to that number 7.4, when are we going to start holding our people accountable for allowing mistakes to be had, like you, you allowed those single-wide trailers to be put in there? Who allowed that to happen? You know, if, if, when I was in the military, somebody did something like that, you were put in a brig, so you need to fire some of these guys, otherwise this is going to continue.
Well, we, we tend to look at the total body of work of our city departments, and if the total body of work gets a score of 98%, it's a little easier to accept the 2% assuming.
No, no, no.
Well, we should all strive for perfection. Even the post office will occasionally deliver your mail to your neighbor, but, you know, we admit that it happened. Our problem now is they're there, and I think we'd feel more callous going in and ripping them out if somebody's living in there.
But this has been continuing for how many years in the past in the city?
Well, it's like B.C. and A.D., it won't happen after 2022.
You hope.
Utmost confidence.
Now you sound like a politician, anyway. How about we're going to do anything about these plastic sacks? That was brought up in the legislature, and it was passed, or passed to take power away from cities from doing this, but I believe the governor vetoed it, so it's still in effect, that we can, the city can still enforce this. I mean, we're having a safety issue, a health issue with these plastic sacks, they're blowing around, they blow in front of you, you might be trying to evade them.
Right, right.
Do it sometimes, so we still need to start holding people accountable, otherwise we're going to be in the same mess that we've been in for the last 50 years.
Thank you. I think one of the.
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, one of the projects that we thought of entrusting to the Solid Waste Committee was to.
Correct.
Kind of do the heavy lifting on consensus and logistics, et cetera.
Yeah, we were doing a waste characterization study and then trying to put together a strategic plan for them essentially to identify some priorities and a timeline, so we had the hic up with the, the, the waste characterization, so you may recall the consultant measurements were often, had to come back and, and reconstitute that study, so staff's working with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to implement that approach that was presented, boy, four or five months ago, maybe, something like that.
I like that verb, that, reconstitute the study. Thank you.
Chad Farber-Salina, I know you guys are ready to go, so I'm just going to.
We're, we're here as long as you.
No, no, I, I'm ready to go, too. A couple of things, we had discussed back the end of last year about getting more input from the community as far as holding meetings in different areas of town, and seeing we could get some input from them. I know COVID held that back, but now that we're approaching this endemic, I think they're calling it now, I'd love to see some, maybe some plans or some ideas of getting out into the community and holding some informational meetings and letting some interaction be done between the commission and the public. And the other thing is, I, I've seen a couple of other council meetings around the state and, and commission meetings, and not to be hurtful, but our decor in this room is lacking compared to other city council areas around, even lacking compared to our school board meetings as well, and I don't know, I saw we've replaced the, the carpeting, and I didn't know if that was in the works, but it would be, it would be great to see some updated decor in this room as well, just, and now you can go.
Private donations are accepted.
Guess we could do a mural back here. New thing.
Or a fountain. One of the nice wall, a wall feature, I mean, water feature, yeah. Well, we make, you know, we do have public art, then someone may come up with recommendation.
I'm going to, Carol Reed, and here in Salina, I'll second his motion on the meeting with people in the community, I think that's, yeah, we still want to see that. My concern is something that with Evergreen Solutions, we did the pay thing, or have you already evaluated, or has, have they already done the evaluation on the pay?
They're wrapping it up, we're getting drafts here as we speak, but nothing, no final action, it hasn't been finalized and brought back to the City Commission yet.
I see. And also, there was the additional $10,000, which is my concern, the implicit bias test, which I still would like to see the results of.
Yeah, it wasn't an implicit bias, bias test, it was gender, it was an equity in terms of pay, just a confirm, reviewing equity of compensation of our employees.
Equity, yeah.
Fairness from male to female and.
And gender and race.
Gender, yeah, gender and race, yes.
Yes, yes, so, are we allowed to have a copy of that test, that you are?
There was no test.
It's not a test, it's a survey or a questionnaire, is that right?
There'll be a final report that will be public once it's.
Are we able to see some of those questions that you're presenting to the employees?
There are no questions being presented.
We're just, we're just trying to look at equal pay for, equal pay for, for equal work.
Yeah, I understand that on the pay plan.
So, so there's not any extra questions, I don't believe, it's just.
No.
Here's, here's what this person's paid for doing this job and what this person.
I understand that, that's on the pay plan, but there was two separate things that you voted on, and it was $10,000 for each extra.
It was extra to, to review that, to go into more depth.
Correct.
It was to go into more depth.
In addition to reviewing pay as it relates to other cities and other employers by job classification, they're going to review pay within the same pay classifications between gender and race within the city, to make sure that there was fair compensation among employees. There's no implicit bias testing, there's no questioning of the employees, it's a review of compensation within our organization.
Done by surveys?
No.
No.
You don't survey the other, you don't survey the gender and the race and the, how other people are paid in different communities?
No, we're, we're trying to find out about ourselves.
Yeah, within our own organization.
Okay, I'll go back and read that a little bit closer, because when I, when I read it, I thought they had used the words implicit bias test, but I'll go back and read it, it seems like it was on page 57, if I remember right.
Now, we may, we may infer after we get the results that there is some, but, you know, as far as comparing us to other communities, we're not going to lower ourselves to anybody else's standard, we're going to set the standard.
No, I just felt like a questionnaire or a survey of the employees considering their race and their gender, if you were asking them questions or having them take an, a test or a quiz or a questionnaire. We do that in our school systems, and it's called an equity, an equity test, so that's why I was putting those two things together, so thank you.
Anyone else? Entertained the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
You got to hear that second, thank you, okay, we are adjourned.